I'll call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the December 16th regular school board meeting. Welcome to all of you who are with us. This is quite amazing, actually. I'll see how many of you are still here at the end of the meeting. And welcome to those of us who will be watching us on delayed broadcast. Allow me to introduce the individuals at the table with me. From my right, we have Korean Hernandez, Bob Unti, Sean Hightman. By my left, we have Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, and Sarah Falters. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold, the Board Secretary. To my left is Dr. Theron Schudy, the District Superintendent, and I'm Bea Kniblog. If you are wishing to speak during public comment, not the public hearing, please sign up on the pink sheet to address an agenda item. You'll be given five minutes to speak, and according to Board policy, the Board will not be able to respond to your comments at this time, but we thank you for them. Please read with me the mission for the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. Stand at your table and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, we have two open enrollment requests that were added due to a move to the area of enrollments out. And then we also have a CAPS agreement to continue a grant program at early childhood that we've had in place for about 20 years.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Miller Hightman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven to zero.
So tonight, we have two gentlemen here, John and Tom Wise, and they are both right here. They are two people who are part of a larger community effort to address outstanding lunch account debt for our students. And so far, I checked this after going on the agenda, it says take a little over 13,000. We actually have 15,788 if I remember correctly so far. So then that's just...
On a quite a base.
Yeah, absolutely. So here's Tom and John Wise. So I don't know what you guys...
So the reason that we got started is all because of Alfonso Medina, who I read in the newspaper about him coming up with some money to take care of some school lunches. And I just kept sitting there and thinking, you know, we ought to do something about that. So I called my brother, and it was kind of like we were back in the car business again because he was saying one thing and I was thinking another, and we wrote all this stuff down. And we decided that we were going to come up with some money on our own, but we thought that we had some friends in town that would probably help out as well. And so we spent a few hours, got some money put together. It's, I know what they said, my total is about 16,500 so far, and we have at least eight people mailing checks. And some people told us they were going to mail checks, but didn't tell me the denomination that they were going to do. So I don't know how much it is. I hope we get 20, 25,000, whatever. I know it's a moving target, but I think it's a good cause. I really appreciate Alfonso for inspiring us, and hopefully we can get more money.
So these gentlemen popped into my office unannounced with Lynn Larges the other day, and of course, I'm like, what is going on here? And it's just, I mean, it was just, it's an astonishing gift of generosity, quite honestly. On behalf of our kids and our families and our district, we're just so greatly appreciative of this gift. It's going to certainly help people out. First and foremost, kids have to have food, and they have to have warmth, and they have to have clothes. And it's just another example of how this community comes together to provide all kids similar to when you guys are growing up and when I was growing up as young Bobcats, the opportunity to be successful. So on behalf of the district, I've got a certificate of appreciation, but certainly can't tell you enough how much we appreciate this. It was phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the public hearing on proposed use of save revenue. That public hearing is now open. Are there individuals who would care to speak today? Could you please introduce yourselves?
Yes, I will. Good evening. My name is James Christensen. I've been a district employee for nearly 17 years now. That'll be this year in January. I'm currently teaching Spanish at Marshalltown High School, and for over a decade, I've been coaching the boys' tennis team at NHS. On average, our boys' and girls' tennis teams have combined 80 players or more over the last 10 years. The boys' team is usually around 40 of that. We are annually one of the bigger boys' teams in the state. However, other towns comparable to Marshalltown have many more courts readily available for use. Mason City, for example, has 10 brand-new courts. Ames has eight brand-new courts plus four more. Ford Dodge has 10, Valley 15, Ankeny 16, Newton 11, Vanel 16. Meanwhile, we're at eight. Having around 40 players on eight courts presents difficulties for practice, and especially for our needs, as there just isn't enough court space to do all the work we need to do. Our JV players are very important to us. They deserve ample practice time and playing opportunities so they can fully reach their potential. There are some times where if they're practice-based, we sometimes have to have eight, 10, 12 players on one court in order to get a full bar some practicing as well. Right now, practices are sometimes cut short. Meets are carried along due to court availability issues and lack of sunlight. It's really a stretch to get some of these meets done in late March, early April, when the sun is not out for very long. In the past, Marshalltown was honored to host multiple large tournaments each year, regionals, districts, invites. However, due to the current condition of the courts, I can't in good faith recommend our facilities to either the girls' or the boys' athletic unions. With the new proposed project, off-street parking, classrooms, working water, electricity, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, and modern seating will be helpful to players, spectators, and local residents alike. During the summer, I also run the Bobcat Tennis Academy, which is a nonprofit entity designed to aid local tennis programs and players. We have bought equipment for our boys' and girls' programs, donated tennis bags, and given college scholarships over the last three years. A diverse set of 64 members of the Bobcat Tennis Academy participated in our summer program last year. Our 8 and 9, and 10 through 12-year-old classes were completely full. Youth tennis is thriving in Marshalltown. These players are excited to very soon have a facility that matches their enthusiasm for the sport. Marshalltown is also in a prime spot to host youth and adult tournaments. We can and will draw players from all four directions, helping our local economy and giving our youth fun activities to take part in. To sum things up, this project will allow our tennis community to fully recognize its potential to the benefit of our current student athletes, countless future student athletes, and the community of Marshalltown as a whole. Thank you for your time.
Others?
Anna Wolfers, special education teacher in the district. I have a lot to inform you...
Yes.
Okay. I have a lot to inform you because you can't help if you don't know, but I will try and keep it short and sweet and to the point. I convinced it some. As Board members, you campaign that you listen, research, do what's best for kids, and focus on teacher recruitment and retention. I love teaching and helping others, but my coworkers and I are tired and need your help. If you search my public Facebook posts the past month, you'll find items on my thoughts regarding the tennis court project. You'll also find educational articles mentioning struggles in other districts across the nation with teacher stress and burnout/leaving the profession. These parallel Marshalltown situation for myself and others. The following is a letter I sent to admin last week. I thought long and hard on how to present these concerns for the sake of improving education for our kids and meeting their needs and helping my fellow teaching and support staff members. As a teacher of special education children, my greatest concern is that students are receiving services as part of their IP. These students deserve the best opportunity possible to create the environment they need to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. This year has been one where the district vision has been very difficult to fulfill in working with my students. The following is a list of concerns for specialized kids, and it's broken into three or four areas: for facilities, staffing, social-emotional strength, and progress monitoring difficulties with our staffing shortage. Currently, my classroom is in the basement and doesn't have soundproof barriers. We're next to STEM and Media Maker spaces, which are great educational programs, but if you have learning disabilities, you cannot focus without sound distraction. I don't even have learning disabilities, and I can't focus. It's also two floors away from our safety room, so if a kid is becoming a risk, we're getting injured in the process. The staffing is the biggest concern that I think we need to shift funding for. My building department has only been fully staffed two and a half days, and most times no subs. Last week alone, we called 95 subs on ASOP, and we had one person answer and actually take a teaching job. That's a huge crisis. We currently have 1,021 minutes of para support that's not being provided for kids with special ed. And we just had a new kid enter our building today that needs 365. As you can probably guess, with lack of staff and needing coverage for needy kids, this is causing emotional and social pain on our teachers and our relationships amongst each other. And like I said, the noise and lack of staff makes it nearly impossible to progress monitor, which is also legally required. So my thing isn't just, I guess, against tennis courts. We have a lot of concerns. So I guess not to just point out issues, but how can we improve wages to fill the gap with paras and subs? They can currently make more at Casey's or Lennox, starting out higher. Is there any way to maybe balance the workloads and shift staff and have them support multiple buildings? And then I've also done a lot of research on, for the community, and go into city council meetings, but there is a lot of information that the taxpayers have already done as far as their views and thoughts on current tennis courts, on the Marshalltown Park and Rec master plan. There's about 20 pages that list the public and the teen views on the current tennis courts and if it's a priority. And if you just search that, this is all the community and the teen youth. So I will have that if you want to look at it later. So I guess in summary, yes, the tennis courts are in need, but we also have a lot of building and district structural needs, and we have a lot of concerns to keep teachers happy in here. So I, as an educator, kind of feel it's, I know it's different funding pools, but I kind of think it's a slap in the face that we're pushing for things when I don't have a whiteboard in my classroom that works, or a computer that hooks to technology, or walls for less distractions while learning. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Yeah, hi. Jim Brunin. I've lived here in Marshalltown since 1998. I have two children in the district. Appreciate you guys' time tonight and listening to your... No one in our family played tennis until 2010, when we signed our son up for Parks and Rec here in town. Since then, our entire family's begun to play. Both my son and daughter are playing here for the Bobcats now. So there's a variety of reasons why we're in support of this project. First one would just be, you know, the high school courts in the River View, there won't be courts available in town. Elmwood and Denver Courts, 13th Street Courts were eliminated. If you've ever gone over to the courts here, currently, you know, three of the eight courts really aren't usable because they're a little unsafe in their current state to play on. We have limited court availability after 5:00 p.m. on the weekends. Multiple times in the past year, when we've been over there playing, there's not enough courts to actually support the number of people playing. Without the lighting, it kind of limits the opportunities and cuts some of the tennis meets short due to darkness, right, because you're playing in the spring. It's difficult to host kind of normal matches, let alone practices, just because we don't have a number of courts. As Coach Christensen mentioned, it's difficult to host regional meets. I know when my son was a freshman, we were lucky enough to host districts here in Marshalltown, which is great. It's an advantage for us. We haven't been able to since just because of the courts and their staffing. There's no proper bathroom facilities. I think it's almost all the home meets. I get a lot of feedback from, especially some of the older individuals who are there watching their grandchildren, comment that, you know, sometimes they don't stay a little time because the bathroom facilities are inappropriate, and it's hard to use for a potty. There's no proper drinking fountains as well. You know, there's actually ADA access problems from the parking area. We get a lot of feedback each meeting, regardless of people coming up the grass hill. They may have to go around to the other side. There's not really any good parking there, so that's a challenge. You know, from a power standpoint, you know, there's no real power for spectators, and there's no real power to easily utilize ball machines for practice. There's no covered spectator area to watch or for the players to wait out a rain delay. Everybody just kind of gets under the evergreen trees, which aren't great, by the way, if you like the trees. We have a developing tennis academy in town, which is great. You know, you may or may not know, tennis is increasing in popularity. There's about a 4% increase in players between 6 and 12 years of age, 9% increase in players between 13 and 17 years of age, and there's about a 4% increase in high school girls' involvement. And of course, there's a huge pickleball increase as well across, really across the nation. Not being able to host USDA events is a little bit of a problem. I mean, there's, I did some simple math between some, like there's an Iowa City tournament last weekend that had 123 players. There was a pellet tournament this summer that had 29. So if you average those two, you get 75 kids per tournament. You know, usually it's a two-day event. If you look at the United States Tribal Association site, they estimate about $142 is spent in a community with a single overnight or two-day type of event, which would bring in about $40,000 to the community for each tournament that we host. There's also helps provide a healthier community. The Cleveland Clinic has said tennis is an ideal sport for a healthy heart. Tennis is historically, you know, something that you can play across a large age group. It's one of the only sports that actually three, you know, three generations of family members can actually play at the same time, right? So, you know, it can help with things with socializing. It can help kids learn to interact with others if they're out with a sport. And youth who play tennis, there's a lot of statistics on this. There's 73% better behaved, 82% more community-minded and well-rounded, and 81% of them say they'll attend college. Statistics and research shows that 48% actually end up with better grades. They're healthier, and they're less prone to risky behaviors. As I said earlier, we go to a lot of matches around the court, watching our kids play tennis. And, you know, towns like Yotumla, Mason City, Newton, Ford Dodge, Lincoln, you know, Hoover, they all have better facilities. Their courts are better. They have bathroom facilities. They have covered spectator areas. They actually have bleachers. Several of those actually have lighting to help them as well. So, you know, there's a variety of other towns that we play that have better facilities. I won't go through the long list because you, I guess I would expect that, you know, it's just, you know, town and cities, areas, places that may be socio-economically, you know, better off than Marshalltown is. But, you know, some of those other towns I mentioned, much smaller communities with much better facilities. So I'm hopefully moving forward with the project with the necessary funding. You know, it's definitely a benefit to our student athletes, our future student athletes, and the community of Marshalltown as a whole. So thank you.
Others?
Okay. I'm not shy. Hi. My name is Thad Lentz. I've been in Marshalltown since 1974, which makes me really old. But I grew up, I went to school there, by the way. I grew up, I played tennis on the Marshall's. That makes sense.
That's the definition of old, Thad.
And I played baseball with Mike, so he's old.
You're done.
I guess I started my tennis career here on the JV. So Coach mentioned, I played JV, worked my butt off. My senior year, I jumped up to number one, then went on to play Division I college tennis with a tennis pro out here in Elmwood for a few years. So I know how important the tennis courts are, not only to, you know, let's so-called shape me, but the fact that I'm still a Bobcat to this day. I go to football games, basketball games, and my kids are long gone. I go to the tennis meets, and I see a lot more kids sitting than I do playing. And I see the other teams, and I see kids sitting instead of playing. And it's very frustrating to me because, plus it's an injury risk, in my opinion, if you play a little bit and then sit down for an hour and then play a little bit. The potential for pulling something, especially in our lovely weather, is pretty dramatic. So I would like to see the kids on the court. I think they'll even get more participation if kids get to play more than one drug university match. No offense, but parents come, they get to see their kid maybe play for 15 minutes during a three-hour tennis meet. Again, more participation from the parents, just all the support we can get for these kids. Back in my day, we had courts right out here. We had two courts outside of Anson. We had courts down at French Park. We had four courts down at 13th Street. As you mentioned, we had courts out of Elmwood. None of them are currently in existence, so there is no other option. So the JV kids, again, just sit. We have the Roundhouse, the place that George Fulkel built. Phenomenal facility. We have a baseball field that used to hold the state tournament until corporate greed took over what everyone called. Immaculate field, amazing, absolutely amazing. The football stadium is fantastic. And then we have our tennis courts. So again, I've played tennis all over the state, all over the Midwest, and our facilities flat-out need upgrading. So I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
My name is Mark Eaton. I live in Marshalltown. I went to school with Thad Lentz, Theron Schudy, so I'm old too. I don't think the issue is whether we need tennis courts upgraded or not. We do. I support that. I used to play tennis, and I used to play, not in school, but casually, one summer, all day long, every day. Me and my neighbors played tennis. The issue's not that. The issue's the financing. In this room sits five people that label themselves as influencers that are part of a board called Vision Marshalltown. We just had two influential people sit up here and take care of the lunch payments. We have a community that can support this program. We don't need to use low-hanging fruit taxpayer dollars to support this program. We can get the money other ways if we're not in such a hurry. Mr. Brunin owns a major company in Marshalltown called Metdon. He can donate. Others can donate. JBS, Emerson, how about Menards and Tyson's? They have nonprofit foundations, but we talked to them. They get TIF dollars from the taxpayer to locate their businesses in this town. Those TIF dollars take money out of the general fund of the school system. The general fund pays the wages of the teachers and staff. Has anybody approached them and asked them for these donations? I don't think this is an issue of whether we need courts or not. This is an issue of financing. And how much time do we want to put in to finding the financing that won't handicap the rest of the staff in the school system or the taxpayers? Thank you.
Others? And the public hearing on the proposed use of save revenue is closed. Thank you all. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of December 2nd? Any items of note and personnel?
There are none.
Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have the addition of a contract that Dr. Schudy talked about at the beginning of the meeting. We have two MOAs for IJ, one at Miller and one at the high school. And we have a renewal agreement for Thought Exchange Services. Are there any questions on those items? Looking at open enrollment, we have one out for the remainder of this year, and we have three, the two that you...
Yeah. There'd be three out for this year.
For this year. And one out for next. Are there any items of note and bills? Looking at the gift grants and bequests, you've heard about the community support towards the outstanding lunch account balances. We have a STEM Best Program Enhancement Fund grant for, given by the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council in the amount of $10,000. Any items or questions on the financial report? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Unti? Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven to zero. Is there anyone on the list?
Nope.
Mrs. Garza, it's your turn.
Thank you for having us tonight. Looking at the gift grants and requests, you've heard about the community support towards the outstanding lunch account balances. We have a STEM best program enhancement fund grant for, given by the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council in the amount of ten thousand. Any items or questions on the financial report? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Untee. Fernandes, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven to zero. Is there anyone on the list?
Nope.
Mrs. Garza, it's your turn.
Thank you for having us tonight, we brought a student body with us that will actually be doing the presenting tonight. I like to delegate to my kids, right? But before we do- Hello, my name is Anell Garza for our new board members, I am the principal at Woodbury Elementary. With me is Mrs. Williams, Heidi Williams, our school counselor, and Julie Tiede, our instructional coach, which we will just allow our kids to present to you the PowerPoint that you have in front of you. But before we do that, I'll give you a little bit of information about this specific group and why they were selected for tonight.
As Mrs. Garza said, my name is Heidi Williams, and I am the school counselor. And at Woodbury, we are always looking for opportunities for our students to grow and develop their leadership skills. One way that we do this is by having our students learn the life skill of filling out a job application. So the students that you see before you filled out, applied for, and were accepted into the role of being public speakers for our school. So these are second through fourth graders, and there are some different jobs that they decided on right when we had our first meeting, I am their supervisor, and they came to me with several different ideas. One idea that they had is that they wanted to practice their public speaking by reading to preschool students. So there are a few students that do that in both English and Spanish. We have a couple other students that provide daily announcements, that they do, again, alternating between English and Spanish each day. And then one more group of students that have been practicing interviewing the staff members that we have in our building, so that they can share about them with the public, so you can be looking on Woodbury's social media, and you'll see some of these students doing a great job of interviewing staff members. They were very excited to have the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight, and I think you'll see why these students were chosen for the role that they have.
Hi, my name is Liliana Vena, and I'm in first grade. This year our school has implanted a new literacy curriculum that was designed for meeting the needs of dual-language learners. It is called Intro, Reading, and Abra La Lectura. We have been working hard to improve our bilingual literacy skills in English and Spanish.
Hello, my name is Theodore Lewis, and, oh. Our new curriculum is organized in three week modules where we have specific bilingual skills that we practice and apply in our reading and writing. Our teachers check our growth and progress through daily work and end-of-module assessments. This helps our teachers know when we need us for help, or when we are ready to reach new goals.
Hello, my name is Erin Safoy, and I'm in third grade. Our new curriculum is structured to help teachers and students bridge the new learning from one language to the other language. This helps us build and connect our skills and death languages as we work towards our bilingual literacy goals.
Hello, my name is Marie Sabrahas, and I'm in fourth grade. Here are some student work samples that showcase our bilingual literacy learning from our new curriculum.
Hi, my name is Tate Williams, and I am in second grade. Hola, mi nombre es Tate Williams, y yo estoy en segundo grado. Primero el conejo estaba volando y ves un pez en la tierra, pensó que estaba haciendo ese pez. El pez dice, yo quiero un amigo, yo quiero ser tu amigo, dice el conejo. Luego el conejo agarró al pez y se fue volando a Jupiter. Luego vi un castillo, he vivido aquí por dos años, dijo el conejo. Y luego los dos amigos vieron un gato y una ballena, y el gato le apoyó y el pez se voló detrás de la ballena. If you would like to hear more of my story, you can read it at a different time later.
Hi, my name is Heidi Gonzalez, and thank you for coming in us and helping us meet our bilingual literacy goals.
My name is Randy, and I'm in fourth grade. Gracias por querer en nosotros y ayudarnos alcanzando estas metas mental desindividuo.
Oh, come on, you gotta applaud for all that. We have one student that became very ill, and Mrs. Penn said to send him home. He was devastated, he wanted to be here tonight, he was in tears because he was not going to be able to be here tonight. If you go back to that slide, he was gonna read this, and he was just gonna read the teacher perspectives, so in his honor, I'll let you read it in silence. Do you have any questions for the kids? What was your favorite part of the new curriculum?
The reading part.
All of you can answer it, start from there.
My favorite part is that we can, like, express who we are, and that we can learn more English and Spanish while the teacher are learning, the teachers are teaching, and we're learning even more.
Definitely the reading part.
Yeah, mine was the reading part.
My favorite part of the new reading curriculum is that we got to read both languages.
My favorite part of the new curriculum is that it allows us to bridge from one language to another.
Reading both languages.
My favorite part is that we could express ourselves that we just don't know one language we know two languages, and that's what make us special.
Other questions?
Fantastic job, guys, you should be proud of yourselves this term.
I have a question. Do any of you want to be teachers when you grow up? What does everyone else want to be? To become?
An artist.
Meteorologist.
Honestly, I want to be a race car driver.
Now what do I do with the microphone?
I really want to be when I grow up, and I really want to be at Mel Arena, because I've been practicing twice.
I want to be a principal when I grow up, I guess. We are very proud of our kids, this is just one of our leadership groups that we have in the building, and that's why they were selected to be our public speakers for tonight. Take a bow. So cool.
We have a, Mrs. Garza, we have a question for one of the students from our board secretary.
Oh, yeah?
Where did you get your purple shoes? I love them. What size are they?
We're ready for you, Mr. Bosby, and Mrs. Lyer.
I'm not sure I want to vote. Well, Kylie, I'll introduce myself, Terry Bosby, past Emerson Executive and current business investor in Marshall Town via four children and all graduated from the HHS. So first, thanks for this opportunity to speak about visiting Marshall Town, and I also want to take this time to thank the school board for everything that you do. I know it takes strong leadership and a lot of commitment, and it's significant for this town, so thank you for that. Kylie's gonna carry most of the program, and we're gonna speak to Vision Marshall Town, it's been around for over three years now, Kylie is the director of, we have a very strong board, there's some representatives in the school board tonight, and what we're gonna go through is a refreshed mission, we'll see some renewed strategies, and also a little bit more clarity around organization, how we hope to execute this plan for the veteran of Marshall Town. My role is gonna be kind of simple to kick off. First, I, you know, I'm gonna speak to the word growth, and then secondly, you know, pose the questions, Marshall Town ready to grow? And, you know, when you start thinking about the word growth, you can go the opposite way and say, well, think about stagnation, and stagnation brings a lot of challenges, whereas growth brings a lot of opportunity and solves a lot of problems right on. I think most of us would choose growth, and I think if you talk to all our business leaders and businesses around this town, they certainly would like to have, both businesses are here and the ones that we desire to have, certainly need more demand, more potential, which means that we need to grow Marshall Town. So, so the leadership question that you have is, is Marshall Town positioned to grow? And we just handed out, if I could take you to the, it's just a simple overhead that says the progress of the community, progress of Marshall Town. And I just want to highlight for you that if you take over the last decade or so, and you caught up to the next slide I was speaking to, if you just cast your eyes down and look at our, let's say, our historical, our historical big businesses in town, so Emerson, Mechton, JBS, from the second row you have Marshall Town Company and Raycom, and what's significant is that all of those businesses have really reinvested heavily back into Marshall Town. You think about the assets and the infrastructure that we have here in Marshall Town, and you see in, cast your eyes down through the Y, the library, the grounds, foreign veterans' home, Thirteenth Street, take it on down to the Roundhouse, which we talked earlier about the facility being unmatched anywhere else in the rest of the state. The trails and the hospital and such, and then you go to the, to the next page, or in the next column under today, and you see the Highway fourteen, Crawsbury Park, and you drop yourself down to the police and fire building. And then since the tornado, which we know how difficult that was, but through the reality of it now, the drive of renovations going on with Lennox, the Coliseum, the courthouse, and the downtown master plan. So, I state all of this because if you would have asked me five, ten years ago, or even five years ago, is Marshall Town ready to grow? And I would have said no, you know, our assets, our infrastructure are not in position to grow. I would tell you that if you would ask me all this, our school system did not allow growth, right? It was not an easy place to recruit into. But with what you as leaders and what the administration has done, what the staff has done, we're in a whole new place relative to education, based on our community progress, we're in a whole new place relative to our infrastructure, our assets, and so in my opinion, we very much are in a great opportunity to grow. So again, I just thank this board for putting us in a position, there's been a lot of community effort around the progress that we've got, we can build on that, and now with the state of our education, I think we also are in a great position to grow Marshall Town. I would say rejoice, but don't relax, you know, there's a whole lot yet to be done. But with that, I'll turn it over to Kylie to speak directly to the Vision Marshall Town twice.
Thanks, Terry. So as Terry said, in July, we went through a new strategy workshop to update our strategy post-tornado. We had housing goals as part of our strategy before, that some of the goals were directly in the path of the tornado, so we needed to revise and kind of recollect. So, we'll look at this document, we'll stay on the first page, and I'll let you know when to change. So, we have a new mission statement, so Vision Marshall Town is a network of organizations and individuals committed to taking action that helps Marshall Town grow and prosper. And our board spent a lot of time focused on the word growth, and how we can help Marshall Town grow and prosper. Our vision statement right there, that's what our mission statement was before, so we still celebrate that we have pride, passion, purpose, we're a global community, and with hometown Iowa quality of living, and really celebrate who and what we are as a community. You can look to the right to that graphic, this is a new visualization of how we can grow Marshall Town and how all of the elements of Vision Marshall Town work together. So, we really talked about how, if we're going to grow our downtown, whether that be new storefronts, physical beauty, anything, that that creates pride in our community, so that helps us grow our pride. And same thing in education, when we have new offerings, when we have national, state recognition, whatever it may be, that helps us grow our pride, that gives us things to talk about. So growing education means growing pride, and then with housing, same thing. When we have new opportunities, we have things to be proud of, that helps us grow our pride and helps us talk about things. And so, this is really, like I said, a new graphic to describe how we can grow Marshall Town and how everything works together, how they're not individually working, but it's all working towards growing Marshall Town and increasing pride in growing all of those areas. The bottom half of the page is our values, these are the same that they have always been. We celebrate that we're a mid-sized town offering global diversity. We are in close proximity to major cities, we all know that that's a pro and a con sometimes, but we still celebrate it. And then meaningful opportunities for involvement, much like you are up here volunteering your time and your commitment to the education system. So, one of the points that our board has really felt passionate about is the positivity to, so overcoming negativity and having positive outreach messaging and dialogue, and really just continuing to move forward in the face of negativity or cynicism. So if we go to the last page, there you go. This is describing what Vision Marshall Town is. So we're not an organization where we don't have a standard org with me as the executive director, I'm not listed at the top with individuals underneath me, we're a network. And so, a network, there are many leaders, and action is seen through the work of many organizations and individuals. Power and action come from many places, we influence one another through a commitment of a shared vision, not through authority, and we accelerate our work by combining intentional strategies and emergent opportunities. And then we also know that new opportunities are going to come along that we may not be able to predict today. So you can see that graphic, it's a little bit harder to see up on the screen, but there's arrows going around the outside. So again, it shows that growth, but then it also identifies in the small circles who's responsible for what areas. So you see that Vision Marshall Town is responsible for the pride sections, downtown has city, and then the central business district. Education has the school district and the community college, and housing has the city and the chamber. And so it shows the Vision Marshall Town roles are advocating, connecting, and marketing. And then you can also see on the bottom of the page, the definitions and what goes into those roles. So if we flip open, so go back a page, there you go. So the structure of this, this is where all the meat is. So we've got our growth strategies listed along the left-hand side, and then the flow of the document listing out the specific strategy goals, then the lead roles, so who are backbone and communicator for those areas, and that is essentially who, what organizations are doing this in their, as part of their organization. And then also supportive roles, so what organizations help assist in moving these things forward. So if we just look at education, again, this is the school district and the college, community college. So, between both organizations, these two strategies are to grow career and college readiness through more work-based learning experiences, and increase the reputation and distinctiveness of education in Marshall Town. In italics, you can see what those metrics are, so that's how we know if we're on target, and we know when we've accomplished these goals. So these strategies were created based on other work and focus. So career and college readiness and work-based learning has been a large focus of the district for the last few years, and then obviously, increasing reputation has also been important. So these are not new items, these are not brand new to anybody. So lead roles, again, we've got the college and the school district on both of those, but if you look at the supportive roles, you've got Vision Marshall Town Board, and then the Chamber, helping advocate and amplify. And so we've got some italics phrases in there, so what does that mean to help advocate? Advocate for, like, work-based learning, so that's support prioritization and resourcing for work-based learning. Or for amplifying its sharing messages, helping seek recognition on behalf of the organizations, and then over in connect and assist, you also have MBEA, so the Marshall Town Business Education Alliance, again, who has spent a lot of time on work-based learning and making those connections. If you look at the second strategy, the reputation, we've got the same organizations that are helping, so Vision Marshall Town Chamber and the Business Education Alliance. So, pride and reputation, that's where I personally spend most of my time. So, just quickly going over what those initiatives are, so we're working on, we have a marketing strategy that's been primarily digital, and so that is- so that is, if you look back to that triangle chart, it's looking at all of those points and sharing those messages, again, digitally. And then moving forward for the last strategy, we're working with the city and the Chamber to work on materials that you could view as recruiting for employers or just general points of pride materials that will help increase the narrative for our community and help promote our community. So. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I certainly have a comment. You know, on the news, when, if you're like on the Today Show, and they say, oh, well, you know, NBC News is owned by Universal. I'll start this by saying, I'm on the board of Vision Marshalltown, and I'm one of the founding members of Vision Marshalltown. And so, but I wanted to point out the education piece, because I think some of the things that you have done, particularly with the videos that you've created that are on social media and the web, have helped raise the, why is Marshalltown's school system a good place? Why is it a distinctive place? Why should you enroll your children here as opposed to other places? And those are pieces of marketing that the school district either hasn't done, because they don't have time, they don't have the resources, or some of the messages that you are putting forth are not messages that they want or can say. And so the value that you play in that particular role is immense. And I think you've done a fantastic job, and I think it's money well spent, and you should keep on with your foot on the gas.
Thanks.
Are there, I'm sorry, I'm a little, I'm not sick, but are there specific things you're looking forward to in terms of marketing materials for this year that you'll be setting up?
You mean in terms of what type of marketing or the, like the information in it?
These are projects that you see, you have a deadline for.
So we're working on a community overview piece. And so if we think of this, we'll be creating a piece that has all the areas of the community. So that's why I said recruiting, so like, why would I want to be here in Marshalltown? And then the backside is customizable, so Darren can use it and pitch his school district, job openings, anything like that. And so it'll be available to everybody in the community who wants to use it. And so from that material, we will then create advertisements, again, a template that anyone can use. So you'll be using the same messaging and color scheme and that kind of stuff design. And then we'll have, with that same information, we'll do some table tents that could be at restaurants or local businesses. And then hopefully, we'll finish out the year with some direct mailers that talk about upcoming events, and then kind of just hit those areas of the community that we want to sell.
2020 will be a very big year to market. I have one more, I passed out one other piece of information for you guys. This is the annual changing subjects to Marshalltown Education Partnership. Hopefully, most of you are aware of it. I'll be very quick in my way, and you can check in the front page, this is newsletter goes out to all the stakeholders of A B P. You can see the board members represented there, which we have Darren and Jackie Berry engaged. I'll take you to the opening up into the middle section. If you just look at our mission, again, MEP is dedicated to educating students about post-secondary education. We have scholarship requirements, so we have freshmen that need to declare their first semester when they're in MHS to become part of MEP. We have, it's the criteria of students must be first-generation college students, they must achieve a 2.75 grade point average and 90% attendance. When they achieve that, they then become available to a 50% tuition paid at MCC. And in many cases, with financial need, they drive a full scholarship to MCC. So if you take next to that, the columns, you see MEP currently serves 276 students at MHS or under this MEP program, which is led by Ryan Black, MCC employee, and actually head basketball coach at MCC today. You can see the number of students per class that participate in MEP. You can see the next chart is 222 scholarship recipients since 2006. And you can see that we've funded $828,000 worth of scholarships since that time frame. Next to it is the page, you can see that picture of all those great scholars there, were from 2019 scholarship class, and then right next to that shows you the graduates that came forward, or that came through MCC in 2019. So really, a hugely successful program, one that's, has a good life, and one that we're going to continue to carry and drive through MCC and MHS and others. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
So within the past couple of weeks, Director of Technology, Josh Westling, myself, had the opportunity to meet Mr. Cox, who had reached out about the potential of involving the Marsh Town schools as well as Marshall County in a project that Iowa State University Foundation has been working on for a couple of years in terms of grant applications. So I've asked Mr. Cox to come share a little bit about this project.
Thank you. Yes, my name's Brian Cox, and I've lived here in Marshalltown for about five and a half years. I'm an engineer, graduate of Iowa State, I've been an engineer for about four years. I now work at the university, at the ISU Research Foundation, as the entrepreneur in residence. I support research teams at the university that are working on new technology. Some examples are renewable energy, precision agriculture, electrical power, and cybersecurity. One of the teams that I'm working with is pursuing a grant from the National Science Foundation in a program called the Program for Advanced Wireless Research. We've been working on this for a couple of years. We do have some grants where we have built some 5G wireless networks on some of the research farms to develop advanced technology. And we're now pursuing this program, the PAWR, we call it POWER. They made two awards two years ago, one in New York City for self-driving vehicles in dense urban environments, one in Salt Lake City for advanced wireless infrastructure in urban and suburban areas. One year ago, Iowa State was a finalist, and the award went into North Carolina to communicate with drones and aerial vehicles. This year, they're making their final award, and they're specifically targeting this for rural wireless communications. So our proposal went in on Friday. What we're trying to do is put together a community, it's a joint public-private partnership with other research institutions, with industry, and with our communities and our school districts. So we have letters of support from school districts, starting in Ames and working out north, southeast, and west. And the, what we're asking is the opportunity to do research in these communities, because we're creating what's called a living lab. As we build a wireless system, a lot of the carriers, they put their networks together, but they don't necessarily do research on them, because they're serving customers, they don't take them down and up and try new things on them. So this is an opportunity to try things in a fairly representative environment to break through some of the digital vibe that we have. So we have communities where kids, like in Marshalltown, they have Chromebooks, and they can use them in the schools, but they may not necessarily have internet at their home and that can do their homework. And this is an issue that's been around for as long as we've had wireless. It's in the concentrated cities and around anywhere where there's large populations, but it gets pretty sparse as the population thins out. So we're trying to develop new infrastructure, new kinds of hardware, new kinds of software to make sure that we can extend the coverage. What we're asking of the schools is the opportunity to locate some of our research equipment at the schools, because what the schools do have is our internet connectivity, our fiber connectivity for what we call the back hall. So we could put radio resources on the towers near the schools, and then our research teams would come in and build things, networks and things to solve problems. The other part of the equation, is that what we're asking is to engage in this community. And the idea is that the researchers want to learn from real, from the real world, what are your, what are your problems in wireless connectivity? And what kind of use cases do you have? So this, this brings along our communities, our schools, and our industry, and brings this along, it gives the students an opportunity to see real technology being developed. And it opens up their eyes and their opportunities for the jobs we're going to have in the future. So what we're asking from the, from the community is engagement also, so that we understand the problems, and we can go pursue the funding and the grants and build the teams that can And I want to tell you what we do do and what we don't do. We do conduct advanced research for 5G wireless. We do look at real problems and try to solve the problems, and we want to do it in a real environment. What we don't do is, we're not putting these things up so that we can have subscribers. This is not an active network, we're going to have people on it, we're not competing with the other wireless carriers. We're developing the technology, and eventually, that technology is going to be available to them to put on their network. So the local carriers will have new ways of connecting to rural carriers. And that's going to give us benefits, not only in the schools, but telemedicine, safety, security, all kinds of new ways of connecting, communicating. So what we're asking from the school district is a letter of support. We drafted one up, we have letters from a number of school districts, and as we pursue this, we'll gather this community together, and as we, as we move forward, we're going to hold workshops and training sessions and bring everybody together to define the research that we're going to do. And ultimately, we're going to sustain this with industry support. So the National Science Foundation will provide up to $16 million to build and deploy and start the work. And then a community of researchers that will pursue other funding sources, and a community of industry that will bring in funding to help us do the research that will end up in their, in their networks is going to sustain this building in the future.
Questions for Mr. Cox?
As you're developing this, is there a way to involve our high school students with the actual research and development of these projects, so they can see how this is done?
Absolutely, absolutely. We see education is one of the prime reasons for bringing this together. And what, my only, my own experience is, is if we develop this, then we're going to have new jobs in Iowa where these kids can get exposed to it in high school, see, hey, I might want to major in something that's related to this technology. And it would be the pipeline that would bring us, bring us students into our new programs. So involving the students is definitely part of the, of the whole program.
I have, in my job at Raycom, I have written a letter of support for the last two years in a row for your, wrote a letter of support for this as well from Raycom.
Other questions or comments? I have a motion to approve the proposed Wireless Technology Research Grant Letter of Support as presented.
Second.
Second. Falsus ante. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw that you were next.
I know, I did, I was a little pop right up, so. Hello, I'm Allison Wilson, I'm the Family Development Director at Mid-Iowa Community Action. And Clarissa Thompson is not with me, it's Sarah Campbell, and she is the Full Service Community Schools Coordinator, supervising the bilingual site coordinators and attendance specialists. So Lisa asks us to come today to talk about our year one of the grant, but I realized that some of you made out of that here last year, and Clarissa presented about what Full Service Community Schools is about, so I thought I'd start there. Really, it's a comprehensive approach to improve educational outcomes for students by providing academic, social, and health services for students, their family members, and the communities in the schools. And a community school essentially is just a place and a network of partnerships that, excuse me, among schools and bringing community resources and kind of a community hub. This grant has really allowed us to develop strategies and create systems to achieve better outcomes for children, families, and the community. And so our history with Micah's history and the school district and community partners really positioned us well for this grant and received it in October 1 of 2018. So we appreciate the commitment from you all, and thank you for your support. But much of the year since we got it, we actually found out, I think the day before, that it began, that we got the grant. So much of the year has really been focused on creating those systems and also hiring staff, bringing them aboard, and learning what the grant is all about, and really on the outcomes. So we continue to work closely with district leadership and the school staff to really create those systems and figure that out, and so we've started year two, October 1. But the handout that I gave, these scroll down, talks about, I'll go over the outcomes that we wrote in the grant that we said we do, and they really all just kind of work together. But I'll start with, and they're not, I should just say this, they're not everything we said we do, it's a pretty large grant, but it didn't take the time. This should give you a good idea of what we're really trying to do. So in the early childhood transition, at outcome one, all children enter school ready to learn, we focused on, well, I'll start with this, there's evidence that demonstrates that in-school transition activities and a transition team approach for those students going into kindergarten will have better outcomes, so they'll ensure a smooth transition. There's early intervention in regards to chronic absenteeism focus. And so one of the strategies is our transition to school KIA, and that actually is something we have done in previous with Rogers University that we brought forth. And that really is designed for the four and five-year-olds, giving them a week-long summer learning program in the three schools, I didn't say that, so we have it at Rogers, Anson, and Woodbury. And it really gives them the opportunity to begin adapting to the school environment. They learn, they know the teachers, the school, and they know what's expected of them and be ready for school. So you see, we had 115 children at 10. The other one is just a new approach for us, is called a transition team approach, or kindergarten transition team. This is really a year-two strategy, but we have begun working on it. It's a team comprised of kindergarten teachers, community agencies, and also early childhood educators and parents to really find out what is needed, what families need, what children need, what schools want, what community programs might see, and really building that relationship and making sure that children and families are transitioning and know what is expected of them. And so we have started that. And then I'm going to jump and talk about outcomes three and four. And those are essentially about just engaging families, really about relationships with families. And one of the strategies is attendance, huge focus on attendance. We have hired attendance specialists that works with the three schools, and we've integrated attendance works with our family development model to provide home visits with families to really address the barriers on attendance, really figuring out what is going on, and also creating attendance plans with them. Um, and those are essentially about just engaging families, um, really about relationships with families. Um, and one of the strategies is attendance, huge focus on attendance. We, um, have hired, uh, attendance specialists that works with the three schools. And, uh, we've integrated attendance works with, um, our family development model to provide home visits with families to really address the barriers, um, on attendance, uh, really figuring out what is going on and also creating attendance plans with them to hopes, uh, to see increased attendance. Um, and then the other one, also very strong to, with family engagement is our Brenda Porches, which is a, um, parent training curriculum. It's a 10-session, um, two-hour, 10, 10-week, two-hour session, um, that promotes, uh, school readiness and, um, family well-being and advocacy, um, really working with those families that builds upon each other and centered around those who have children zero to five. Um, and it also, I should say, addresses attendance in there as well, um, leadership civic engagement. Um, and in this one, we actually, let's see, the training was in March, is that right? Um, so our bilingual site coordinators weren't able to get trained in this until March. And then, um, by not getting, not really having those relationships with the families in the school, didn't really get that going. And then we had Bobcat University. And so that's, um, really a strong focus we have this year. Second piece of that is the Brenda Porches Alumni Group, which, um, is really centered around year two and taking those parents who complete that 10-week, two-hour session and engage them into a train-the-trainer so that they can carry out the trainings and then yet to expand that program, so. And I'll talk about our other two outcomes. Uh, one goal being surrounded by community engagement and having, uh, the service hub that Allison talked about as part of the goal of the grant is bringing the community and parents and students involved together. And we have that done during a couple of different ways is providing direct referrals to the community, whether that be a family in need of Salvation Army or the Caring Center, House of Compassion utilizing our community resources here, but also bringing the community resources to the schools. So we've done LIHEP, which is our low-income HEAP, excuse me, Home and Energy Assistance Programs to the schools to do applications there. We've brought in center associates to some, um, education around emotional intelligence as well as Iowa legal aid to talk about landlord-tenant law and insurance as well. So really providing that connection between families and the community in a location that's more centralized. Uh, next goal, we're going to go back up to outcome two, sorry, and Bobcat University. It's our robust summer learning program that we do, you know, we operate at all six elementary schools and Lenahan, but this grant specifically focuses, like she said, as Anson, Woodbury, and Rogers. And providing that robust academic service. You can see our service numbers here. And continuing forward with that robust service for years.
Questions for Allison and Sarah?
Thank you for presentation. Um, one area that goal for family engagement, I see that one has like the lowest metrics of family participation. I can understand how that might be difficult sometimes to get family participation. And, uh, one thing as a school board member that you see is, um, kids that get expelled. They all end up here and they get approved here. And one of the things that I notice from my board seat are families that aren't engaged oftentimes lead to kids who get in trouble and eventually get expelled. And so, um, if there are things that we can do as a school board to help you improve your participation in this goal area, I as one board member would be willing to do it. As an example, making parents participate in something, parent education, prior to their allowing to be re-enrolled in the school district after expulsion. I'd be in favor of something like that. Even forcing the parents to, um, go through that for a lengthy suspension. I as one board member would be in favor of that. If you want, if you supported something with your grant money as an example, taking infinite campus and making it accessible in more than just the English language as a English-speaking parent, that's how I know what's going on with my kid. But if you don't speak English, it's real hard on that particular, um, software platform. And so if, if there are things like, like that, um, I applaud what you're doing and if we can help you do more, I'd be happy to try.
I, I will say that, you know, in the early childhood piece of that is really if we can find families, uh, Brenda Porches really is centered around zero to five-year-olds. So, um, if we can educate them and get them involved and let them know, you know, have them understand what's, um, how important it is for them to be and what that might look like being involved in the school, then maybe there would be less of.
Amen.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This week, we have two more of the dual-credit students that will graduate with 64 credits. So here's one caller.
Uh, the step group at the high school, um, starting today until the 20th will be holding a winter clothing drive. And there will be boxes located at the Y in the high school, and all of those people will go to the House of Compassion. I don't think it's on yet. It's not on.
Okay, these are the upcoming sporting events. Today, we have bowling and basketball. The basketball game was actually here. Um, tomorrow, there's wrestling and boys' basketball. Wednesday, there is nothing. Thursday, there's bowling, swimming, and wrestling. And Friday, there's girls' and boys' basket. There are dual-credit courses online and at the college. Uh, the classes ended December 13th, and, uh, the high school students are on break from the college until January 13th. Uh, this is a silver cord update. So at the high school currently, 92 students are trying to get their silver cord. Um, it's 100 volunteer hours before freshman and sophomore year and another 100 between junior and senior year. A lot of the incoming freshmen don't even know what silver cord is, so we need to keep continuing to educate them on that.
So what is silver cord?
It's where, um, we volunteer for 200 hours and then at graduation, we get a cord. And it looks good for college.
Have the experience yet.
Appreciate your honesty.
Okay, this is actually Diana's slide, but she's not here, so I'll read it. So this is for finals preparation. Students will leave for winter break on December 20th. Studying is essential during this time for many students, preparing for finals coming up in January for the first semester. Several seniors prepare for finals before finishing up their last year, graduating the semester early while having their required course. Okay, this is also Diana's slide. Uh, there will be meetings on December 10th and December 17th from 3:30 to 4:30 at MOA and this provides support in the resources for parenting teams in the community.
Do you know what kind of participation areas in that's included?
This will be the first meeting.
Pardon me?
This will be the first meeting.
Okay. So we're at zero right now.
Okay, also another one of her slides, for science founds. So career project started on Wednesday, December 11th. Required presentation for the continuation of the science found pre-college program. Serves as practice for oral justification, which is in spring up next year. Student Senate will be hosting an ugly sweater day on Friday, December 20th, and the Senate will rank all participating students and the winners will receive prizes based on their attire. The elf scavenger hunt. An elf, an elf will be hidden in different places throughout the school for students to find. Riddles throughout the week for students to answer, and prizes will be given to the students who answer the riddles first. So Skiva Jazz was this Saturday. We left very early in the morning, did not get back till late. And then the band concert was at 8:00 and we had a really good participation in the cookie walk. So, Step Adopt a Family is sponsored by the House of Compassion every year, and Step adopted three families this year. Shopping days were December 2nd, 4th, and 8th, and presents were wrapped on Monday, December 9th. Today, during E and R, Ally Osmondson met with students who are receiving their associates in order to fill out an admission application and graduation form, and the amount of credits needed and completed was also addressed. Student Senate recently sent out a form to observe the number of students willing to have a winter formal. Last year's winter formal was canceled due to weather, so hopefully Mother Nature is on our side. XLP updates. Math team continues to compete and prepare for success at state in April. Quiz Bowl is heading towards the science bowl on January 25th, and although it's not up there, MHS Robotics hosted the Lego League competition this past Saturday in the Roundhouse. This started up because MCC stopped hosting it and high school decided to take over. Last week on Wednesday, LOL meant to discuss Enrique's journey. It was about a boy named Enrique who traveled thousands of miles to meet up with his mother in the United States and he came from Guatemala. Moving forward, there is a potential author visit from another story in the interwoven And the poetry out loud contest is tomorrow. Eight students will be competing and the requirements are one pre-twentieth century and 25 lines in a year of one. And they should both be bonus.
And will that person go to a state competition?
Yeah, so the winner of the school competition gets to compete in state. In the past two years, that has been Olivia Adams-Moore.
Questions for the ladies?
I have four questions. Any idea how many seniors graduated semester early? Any idea? Yeah. Are you both planning, um, to participate in the ugly sweater event?
Yes.
I will contest that I'm on the library board. Do you, uh, does, do you know if there's any collaboration around, um, having author visits with the, with the public library?
Well, LOL is sponsored by the public library. Um, Jawa.
Jawa is the best.
Yeah, Jawa comes.
And what, the school competition for the poetry out loud is on the 17th. What time is that?
It will be taking place fourth hour through a little bit of fifth, so it's like an hour and 13 minutes.
For those of us who are not in.
Oh, um. 11:30. Thank you.
And it's, it's where?
In the auditorium.
You know, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies.
Um, I have two presentations to share with you tonight. The first one is an information-only item. I wanted to give you an update on how our students fared on the first, um, run of the new state assessment, which is, um, hard to pronounce, but is called ISAS, um, which stands for the Iowa Statewide Assessment of Student Progress. And as I said, these are our baseline scores and I have some information, some background for you for those of you that are new board members. Um, so these assessments were developed by Iowa testing programs at the University of Iowa for the state of Iowa. And this needed to be done because our previous Iowa assessments did not meet on the standards of the new Every Student Exceeds Act. The assessments are aligned at every grade level with our Iowa course standards for math and literacy, and they will give us a clear and accurate assessment of how our students are doing in terms of meeting learning outcomes. Eventually, we will also get growth reports too, so we'll be able to see how our students are growing from one year to the next. Some things that you might not know about ISAS are that, um, it was given, it was given completely online, so all of our students in grade 11 used Chromebooks to access, um, a web browser where they were able to take their reading tests, math tests, and even do their writing assessments, which was new for our students. Um, and those tests came with many, um, online features that helped universal combinations or features, designated features where kids could highlight information, it could be read to them, they could listen to things, um, just lots of things that paper pencil tests are not able to support students with. All right. So here it is. Um, this slide, um, I started out with because one of the benefits that Marshalltown has is that we are all part of the Urban Education Network, and so I get to go to UEN meetings a few times a year. And in our curriculum group, um, we wanted to, or this was shared as a document where you could plug in your own district. And what the goal was, was to try to show that, um, most districts saw a decline in their students' proficient percentage, um, but that is not uncommon because it happened across the state of Iowa too. So you'll see in the Iowa column that across the board, at every grade level, in every content area, students went down in reading, um, math and science. So what I did with the color coding was just try to give us a picture of how, um, like if Marshalltown had positive growth or growth that was not different than the state, then that was a green, a real celebration area for us. Yellow would be our decline is less than the state's decline, which is also something, a decline isn't something to celebrate, but having less of a decline than, than others is, is something to be think, to be thought of. And then the red would be an area where Marshalltown's scores dropped at a higher level than what the state's scores did, um, from 2018 Iowa assessments to 2019. And I just want to remind you that that, this really is comparing apples to oranges, but this is also one way for us to, to kind of see that we, how we're faring compared to others in Iowa.
Apples and oranges because the test was different in 17 and 19?
Yeah, it was a different test, right.
But it's apples to apples when you say, everybody took a different test in 17?
Yes, exactly.
And everybody took, but they took the same test in 17 and took the same test in 19?
No, they took the same test in 17 and the same test in 18, but then in 19, everyone across the state took a different test.
But everybody was taking the same test at the same time?
That part is true, yes. Okay.
But the test was very, very different.
Right, so in the past, 17 and 18 tests, the Iowa assessments, all the items on the test, one-third of the test items were written to assess below grade level standards, one-third above grade level standards, and one-third at. So students had a much, um, higher likelihood of being proficient on that assessment than this 2019 assessment was strictly testing grade level standards. So 100% of the items should have been able to be matched to a grade level standard. Okay, so that was English Language Arts. As you can see, we have quite a bit of work to do there in the middle. Um, the next slide is mathematics. And you'll see again, this made me excited, um, because I've been here for three years and I'll tell you about all the work we're doing in math, 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 math at K6. And so I really am pleased to see that our scores went up, which completely bucked the trend of what's happening across the state in grades four, five, and six. And in grade three, I, I think, you know, sitting in there at 63% is, is pretty good news. Um, so again, in math, we do have some things to iron out at 7-11, but seven through 11. Um, but I am pleased with the work that we've been doing. Mike asked me a lot, how do we know if it's working? So I would say the implementation of our Go Math curriculum along with the supplemental ST math and the money we've invested in PLC work for teachers to sit and really dig into those math assessments and math standards is paying off for us. Um, and elementary.
What is PLC?
Professional Learning Community, sorry.
I mean, I only need to hear it six more times.
I talk, I talk, we talk in acronyms a lot, I promise. I'll try to do better at that.
That thing is something to celebrate.
It is, yes. And I too, I think. And I too, I think too, one of the things, and the high school principal and I have talked about this too, is that in many cases at grade nine, 10, and 11, there is more of an equal representation across the domains of geometry and measurement and all of the pieces of mathematics where many, many of our students, like around 35%, I think was the last time I checked, don't get to geometry until they're juniors. So, that would mean when they took these tests as ninth and 10th graders, because they're still trying to get over that algebra, they hadn't really been presented with a lot of geometry content. So, there's been, I've already had conversations from the math department wondering about how we're going to address this moving forward. So, they're having conversations about it for sure.
And Bob, so the Professional Learning Community is basically grade level or department. Teachers come together to meet, looking at data, usually formative, shorter-term data, determine what's working, what's not, what strategies are they using, what do they need to try to see if they can get better results, that sort of thing.
The next, the third slide you'll see is Science. And ESSA requires the states to test Science also, but not at every grade level. And so, that's why you'll see grades five, eight, and 10. That's the only grades that the Science test is either printed, or not printed, but offered in. And statewide, this caused a lot of concern. There were very large decreases in performance in the area of Science and we, in Marshalltown, I'm not sure why that yellow column is the way it is, but we, that should, or grade 10 should also be, should also be red. And so, a couple of notes to note for you, like background knowledge, is when you take that test in grade five at Lennyhan, that's testing the third grade standards, the fourth grade standards, and the fifth grade standards. And that's new and the same for eighth grade and 10th grade. So, that's something that we'll have to think about in how we scope and sequence out our Science instruction. And secondly, the state adopted new, more rigorous NGSSs, I can't even think off the top, next-generation science students that are just, I think are now fully implemented K-12 across the state. So, we're getting used to the new standards and the rigor that goes along with them, our Science instructions, that has had to change as a result of that. So, definitely have room to grow in Science. And then the next series of slides, I think there are about nine or so, I just wanted you to be able to see by grade level, the building level and grade level data and how that compiled up into those first three slides you saw. So, there you see Marshalltown High School. In general, at grades nine, 10, and 11, which are the next three slides, we have about half as many students considered advanced as others, as the state average, which I'm not sure that's a real accurate representation of our kids' abilities based on previous Iowa assessment advanced proficiency numbers. And then we also have about 30 more percent of our students that are considered, the yellow is not proficient, in case you weren't sure. Yellow is not proficient, blue is proficient, dark blue is advanced. So, you want your slide, your bars to be blue, not yellow. And then in 10th grade, again, you'll see the kids took the Science test as well as English Language Arts and math. And as a reminder, English Language Arts now includes not just reading comprehension, but it includes English grammar, English Language Arts, as well as two writing samples, two writing prompts. And then moving down from the high school to Miller. And just kind of a commercial break of sharing here, every, one of the principals has received their data, they've created presentations for their staff, some share these results at building meetings, some have shared in different ways, many will be digging in deeper on January 17th when we have building level professional development so that they can go through this with all their teachers. And then these results were either sent home in Thursday folders, the parent reports, or mailed home. I'm pretty sure the secondary has mailed theirs home, if not now, very soon, because they'll be sending them home with other information.
So, when the teachers get the information at their board level, do we have an item analysis that, so what are teachers seeing?
This is a big, they're seeing domain reports. So, one of the big changes, and people aren't pleased about this, is that there are no more item analysis reports. What they've done is take all the questions and filter them out to which of the five domains of math did the question come from. And then for English Language Arts and Writing, they did the same thing, like.
So, there's little way to find out where the gap really is.
Yes and no. Like, I was looking at Lennyhan's fifth and sixth grade English Language Arts. Kyle has pulled all of his across and, for example, vocabulary was a relative strength for our kids at Lennyhan and ELA, which I think teachers will find that level of information interesting, whereas author's craft or author's purpose was not. So, that's the kind of level of domain or thematic information that teachers will get. I don't know, maybe there'll be power in the masses and with enough people saying they missed that information, maybe they'll develop that for us down the road, but as of now, we are not able to see that. I know, it's really.
That would be a detriment to a stat number and to the PLCs.
Right, which is why I'm really grateful that we have our Common Formative Assessments and our Unit Assessments because we can look at those item analysis. The next two slides you see are Miller Middle School and I've had multiple conversations with principals about this too. They just were not, they did not believe this was a true indication of how much our kids can do at Miller. And they're digging into their testing environment and the rigor of what kids are doing every day in hopes that we can change those blue and yellow bars around because right now in some tests at some grades, we have more kids than not proficient than proficient.
Can I ask a couple of questions about that?
Yeah.
So, in my, I've seen a lot of these early years reports of this, these are, these are good graphs you've done, thank you. Consistently, I will say that Miller Middle School underperforms other places. And so, in my quick look at these slides, and you're going to go through a little bit here at elementary schools, it looks like Miller is significantly underperforming the other schools, where the other schools may be there is as much as 50% higher non-proficient rates than the state average. At Miller, it's 60 to 90% higher than the state average non-proficient rates. And if you go to your elementary schools, some of them are much less than that. Why in the world can we go along in the elementary schools at about the same level and all of a sudden Miller, way more non-proficient than at the high school, goes back down again? So, why is Miller not performing the way other schools are?
Some of the possible easy answers are they think the kids aren't taking the assessment as seriously as they need to be, they're not setting them up like in a testing environment and putting enough explanation in front of the kids, like, these scores are important, these will help your counselors and parents decide what courses you can take in high school and the courses you shouldn't be taking because this would tell us, you're not ready for advanced such and such or taking MCC classes. So, I think that, that at least I've heard multiple times since I've been here there and I'm sure you've heard it too, that the kids are, we're assessing them two to three times a year with a math, two to three times a year with a reading. So, they're getting, they're getting lots of assessments and those results are not as drastic as these. So, I don't know, this was given the first week of May, but I really, I wish I had a better answer for your mic. I was disappointed when I saw this also. And I think the teachers at Miller are too, because they're doing, I mean, it's, they're trying, they're doing what they can. We are, we just adopted new aligned math materials at 712 for this school year. So, this will be year one of them using the same program we're using at K-6 once they get to Miller. And then we also this year are in study, I saw Brad back there, we have a 712 ELA committee that's looking at our writing curriculum and our reading curriculum to make sure that what we're, what the state is assessing our kids on and with is equally matched in what we're giving them every day in the classroom to do.
Yeah, I don't know that I have a great answer yet either. I'm definitely going to be really interested to see what the spring, late spring test results show in terms of growth on the benchmark. Or I would say just in general, having spent 20 years of my career in the middle school, that there tends to be generally a dip like what you described, that there's a good course of progress typically that happens, third grade through, let's say, fifth. And then there's kind of a natural dip that happens a lot of times in the sixth, seventh, eighth grade maybe area. We used to test in the fall when I was middle school principal and so, we would see that dip in sixth and seventh, that'd be minimal growth, and then all of a sudden boom in eighth, that was, you're back on track. So, we had no good explanation for it other than, you know, between those years, hopefully all the standards that they were being tested on were getting covered and there was much less alignment, I would say, back in those days than what we have today with the Iowa Core and now with this test. So, I think this spring test will be really important to take a look at to see truly what's going on there. And I'm confident that not only the administration, but the teachers are going to have the same interest to try to do what they can to figure out in those domains what they need to do differently.
And the state uses this too, to give us our school performance profiles, our school report cards. So, this doesn't help when you have this because they were identified as a targeted school last year for the performance of revenue lunch, English learners, and African-American students, I believe, at Miller. And so, this most likely won't help us get off the targeted list. I don't think our subgroups will have performed higher.
Used to be at Lennyhan.
So, I would agree with everything that you said about the dip and, you know, I'll defer to your experience there. What I'm talking about is the comparison to the state average is so much, so much worse. And I don't mean to cash dispersion on the teachers. I mean, I know a lot of the teachers, I think the teachers are just as great at Miller as they're graded at other schools. What I worry about is what we're asking the teachers to teach those kids. Is it the right thing? Is it the right environment? Is it the right demands? I'd say what we're doing isn't working because I've sat here for years and seen the same scores out of the same place.
I think once I get to my next presentation, the At-Risk Report, you'll kind of see some other things that we put into place to put, to wrap our arms around a little bit more tighter at Miller, the kids who aren't, so that they're not slipping through the cracks. Because you have to understand that these are the levels that teachers are seeing of performance in the classroom. These kids aren't earning A's and B's, they're not. So, then you have to worry about, you know, creating what kind of culture of learning that you're creating those students so that they're well-positioned when they go to high school to earn credit from day one. So, I think that's a big, a big piece of it. And they revamped their master schedule at Miller to add in more reading interventionists and add in a math interventionist. So, I think they're, they're recognizing that the classroom teachers can't do this all by themselves, they're going to need people to help intervene. And special education is part of the system, but it's not for every child. And so, we have to be able to have things in place to put the kids in the middle. The next two slides are Lennyhan, fifth grade and sixth grade. And again, fifth grade had a Science test, sixth grade didn't. In general, at grade five to six, we have about a third less to have as many students advanced in all three test areas. But we also have about 45% more non-proficient science and ELA, students in ELA in Science. I'm happy to say we're performing much more like the state in math. I think that's a definite area to celebrate with 67% of our students, I'm sorry, 69% of our students being proficient in math and 67% in English Language Arts. I think those are pretty awesome things we're seeing in fifth grade at ELA in math, in Mathematics too, and those carry over into sixth grade also. I do know that Kyle and his team, his building leadership team, have worked really hard to revamp their schedule too because they have been identified on their school performance profile as a targeted school because of the performance of their students with IEPs. And so, they had been a half and half situation where you spent half your day at Lennyhan with one teacher and half with another. We did two subjects with one and two with the other. And they recognized that that schedule needed some support, students were needing more support than that schedule allowed. So, they've gone to a model where they spend a third of the day with a teacher that teaches Science or Social Studies, a third with someone that focuses on math, and a third with someone that focuses on ELA. And they've also built in intervention time that every student gets access to because in the past, if you had band, chorus, orchestra, or any of those other things going on, you maybe didn't get the interventions that you needed. They've also built in Bobcat time, which gives kids some time for enrichment activities. And did you have a question?
Did you have a newer math curriculum? It looks like it's working.
Right, so Lennyhan would be on year three of their Go Math curriculum.
What is the new math curriculum?
Go Math. And then the last six slides that you'll see are our six PK4 buildings and their only grades at test are third and fourth. So, you'll see our two schools that are having, still having the highest percentage of non-proficient students are Anson and Rogers. And both of those schools are considered comprehensive schools because of their student achievement. They were identified a year ago and are working, they had a one-year funding that they were given by the state and then a three-year tag as a comprehensive school. And so, they've been working on plans with their staff on how to address and reduce the number of students who are not proficient.
Is Woodbury also on that?
No, Woodbury's not.
Because of their fourth grade?
Well, it's actually based on the 2018 Iowa assessment scores was how you got the label last December.
So, it was just Rogers and Anson who went to those state?
Comprehensive. And Fisher was targeted for one. But the other three schools, Franklin, Hogan, and Woodbury, had enough proficient students and/or growth between third and fourth grade, or fourth and fifth grade, that they did not get that title designation.
Well, at the third grade level, our elementaries have a non-proficient percentage from anywhere from 40 to 55, which is a huge. And then if you look at math, it's between 27 and 48, which is even worse.
Yeah, I think too, it's interesting because the, it'll be interesting to see what the performance profile shows us that's coming out in January because I think it was 49% of your total report card will be based on growth. So, our third graders, while we want them to be higher proficient, we are seeing that by fourth grade, that number goes down in almost every building. You can tell us here at, Woodbury would be a great example, you've got 55% non-proficient in third grade, it dips to 36% in fourth grade. So, yeah, I know the ranges were pretty large, I saw that too. But another thing that was really surprising was the amount of advanced students that we're having at the elementary level. I don't know if you noticed that or not, but our, in some buildings, our numbers were very close to what the state average was, which is something to celebrate.
Does the percentage make a difference because Rogers is a two-section school compared to the other?
Just that it means they have less, like a smaller N of students to move the average. So, right, so Rogers and Anson are receiving support from the EEA and the state because of their designations. We saw some wonderful work in math, Fisher's results, Franklin's results, Hogan's growth in math from third to fourth grade was amazing. Yeah, there's a lot of great things going on. And two, as a reminder, at Woodbury, the kids took their test in Spanish, which was also an option that had never existed before. But with ESSA, they were, they had to put the entire assessment out in Spanish also. And so, there were a few other students across the district that we made individual decisions for, like this child should take the test in Spanish. But at Woodbury, every student took it in Spanish and math because they've only ever learned math in Spanish. And they did wonderful. I think we had some nervousness about it because, you know, there's a lot riding on this, but if you believe in our dual-language program and you believe the results that we've seen, they should be able to do this. And I actually, I went over and watched the one class and the kids were just reading. And I went over and watched the one class and the kids were just reading the word problems, writing down their answers, doing everything, just like the kids that were taking in English at the other schools. So, that's something that's exciting.
We're actually better than the state.
It's pretty great. So, lastly, I always end my slides with kind of what does this mean to us and what are we going to do from here? There's, I'm thinking of you, Bob, sorry. There's lots of acronyms on here.
Please think of them.
But our professional learning communities work will continue across the district. We know it's making a difference in the ones that are doing it and doing it at high levels in the content areas. Our district curriculum adoptions are really important. I know it's a lot of money, it's a lot of work, and it's a huge decision that we commit to for seven years in most cases. But when we get, like you heard the kid, I wanted to ask the kids today what they thought curriculum really was because that's a big word, but they all said the word curriculum. But I think teachers feel a little bit more supported when they know they have a wealth of resources at their disposal and they're not making up things and having to hunt and find books and buy stuff themselves. And that makes me happy and my team to know that we're able to give them the resources that they need because they already have so much on their plates every day. I'm hoping that we have a similarly happy outcome for 712 in ELA that I bring back to in the spring. District math adoption, you've heard us talking a lot about math over the years. It's not a home run by any means. As we pointed out, there's some grades in elementary math that aren't where they need to be yet. And then science, of course. And our writing assessment is, that writing assessment is new. We didn't have any writing assessments in place. And so, that's been really eye-opening for our teachers too because the kids are being asked to write on demand. So, a prompt pops up, right, and you have to respond on demand versus the way we were teaching writing, and still do to some pieces, is you're writing drafts and revising and brainstorming. And that's not really what these assessments are asking our kids to do. So, what are the goals on this as a system? We're continuing to try to align our daily instructions, what kids get every single day, to the standards because we know now what the bar is. We're going to review our writing feedback. So, the Iowa Reading Research Center partnered with us. You've seen some of that on the Consent Agenda requests. So, our students in grades one through six are taking online writing prompts. And then the state, the University of Iowa, houses the Iowa Reading Research Center on behalf of the Department of Ed. And they're giving us feedback on our kids' writing three times a year, which should help definitely give them more practice so they're more ready for ISASB in the spring. Our teachers will have professional development in February as well as March, again, prior to us giving the assessment in April and May. And we're going to continue to have conversations about intervention and acceleration for K-12 because we want to make sure our students that are at that advanced level are being challenged every day and the kids who need support are getting it.
Is it fair to say that, I know we talked a lot, especially with math, about the results kind of coinciding with curricular adoptions or changes that have taken place over the last two or three years? And is the secondary a little bit lagging behind in terms of because of the adoptions at elementary, they might be in year one or yet to be adopted in terms of finding the best curriculum that's going to be aligned to the core and that sort of?
Yes, that would be fair to say. Since I've been here, secondary has had science, social studies split over two years, and world language. So, we haven't hit ELA and math until this, math is year one now, and then ELA will be year one next year.
Yeah, I would say part of your issue at Miller is that you're...
Would you use your microphone?
We can't hear Mike, we don't talk to him right.
I would think that at least part of your problem at Miller would be a mismatch between the test and the curriculum.
I'd say that's fair.
I want to practice new vocabulary. Do you have any sense of how the morale of PLCs is affected by the new curriculum? Are they encouraged by it? Are they finding it difficult or important or happy or whatever?
That's a good question, Bob. I get to visit PLCs sometimes. I'm not in all 74 of them, obviously. But I do know what I hear from instructional coaches and others, principals, that it's our new teachers, of which we have many in the district, year one and year two, really appreciate that time in that professional learning community because it helps them have designated mentoring opportunities with the more veteran teachers. And the new curriculum adoptions kind of level the playing field because it's as new for our veteran teachers as it is for our new teachers. So, that's kind of fun to watch sometimes, that dynamic of them all learning something together. It's stressful. I'd say morale is, you know, it's hard. I mean, adopting a new English Language Arts series is a big deal. At K-6, they teach that content, are over 90 minutes a day. So, not knowing, you know, the flow and the routine of it is, they're worried that they're doing it wrong or they're not doing it as well as they could. And that there is really high-stakes assessments that are hanging out there. So, yeah, I'd say it's probably challenging for sure.
I think Bob's question is a fantastic one. When I was at Hogan last week, I watched a teacher who was enthusiastic about what she was teaching. And that enthusiasm feeds the kids, so they're enthusiastic. And so, they learn more. And so, I think making sure your teachers are engaged and enthusiastic about all this change that we're giving to them in math and in reading is incredibly important. This teacher, I can't remember her name, I'm sorry. But she, Faren and I were standing next to each other. And she read this and she kind of held him in suspense. "We're going to have to find out tomorrow what the answer to this." You know, they're like, "Ah!" So, they were great about it. And she did a fantastic job of this. But it wasn't the curriculum. It was her enthusiasm about the curriculum that got the kids enthused. And when they're enthused, their minds are open to learn something. And so, I think your question is spot on.
I think that our principals and instructional coaches are really tuned in to the stress level of the teachers right now and trying to do their best to, like Mike said, keep them motivated and keep them excited about what they're teaching and learning. Because you're right, the kids pick up on that and that can sink a lesson too. So, you have to be healthy and energized when you're presenting to the kids. And we will be taking the test the week of April 27th. I think that's the Monday. And we have up until May 15th to finish. And then, they say we'll get our results back in two weeks this year. It took six months to get these back. But we're going to get them back in two weeks because all of the writing scoring is done with artificial intelligence. So, the kids' writing samples go through an AI screener and that's how they get their writing score. So, I'm excited to have end of the year, hopefully, test results to share with you in June. Technology.
Good work.
I'm sorry. I tried to keep it to 10 minutes. All right. At-Risk, Josh, please. So, now is the time for us to be talking about our At-Risk budget, believe it or not, for the 21-22 school year. So, this is a two-part process. Tonight, I'll be sharing information with you. I have a PowerPoint, there we go. And then, there's a one-sheeter budget that Paulette is awesome and does. And then, I'll bring this back to January 13th for you, hopefully, to vote to approve our At-Risk budget and plan because we have to have it. The board minutes uploaded by January 15th. So, some background building here. What is at-risk? So, it's any identified student in K-12 who needs additional support because they're not meeting or they're not expected to meet the established schools of our system. That can include, isn't limited to homeless children, dropouts, returning dropouts, or potential dropouts. And so, in Marshalltown Community Schools, we identify at-risk students based on four different factors. One of them being chronic absenteeism. One of them is your proficiency in reading or math. A third one is connectedness to school factors, which is kind of a menu of traumatic events, I would say, traumatic things that maybe have happened in a child's life that are impacting his or her performance in school. And then, the fourth one is behavior. So, if you're having major behavior referrals or possibly bullying harassment. So, when you look at those four different factors, we try to identify if a student hits three out of the four of those, or two out of the four if they're an older student. And that's how you would have an at-risk label or an at-risk program option for you. This is straight from Iowa Code, just kind of a reminder of what we have to do for at-risk students. We have to look at our program. We have to review if it's working. We have to make sure we have procedures and criteria in place to identify kids so that we don't under-identify or over-identify. And three times a year, the state lifts that data from us to see how many kids we're identifying. So, what is happening in at-risk in Marshalltown? There's a link there. We have a K-12 At-Risk Committee that Eric Goslin leads with my support. And that committee includes a total of 12 people, which are counselors, social workers, et cetera, central office. In the past, it was only 512, but we've expanded it to include K-12. We try to meet quarterly for a couple hours and have all representatives there. And we use that advisory group to kind of bounce ideas off about what is our data looking like? This is how we programmed. What are some things that we still need that our budget should consider? And for 1920, our expenses are covered under five main categories. The first being credit content recovery for students at the high school level who are deficient in credits. So, they use a program called Edmentum. And you'll see the cost of Edmentum built in to the At-Risk budget. It also includes salaries for eighth-hour teachers. So, at the high school, they have an eighth hour after school where students can stay. There's also a para educator that works in the peer program. And peer is a location in the high school where students can go and who are needing support in their classes. The second big allowable service area helps fund our juvenile court liaisons, of which we have two. One serves MMS and one at the high school. And our district pays 75% of their salary. The other 25% is supported through the... The DCAT grant, thank you. Thirdly, one of the largest items in our budget is Marshalltown Learning Academy. So, the salaries that are connected to the five full-time teachers that work there, the administrator, a secretary, and a school resource specialist. And fourthly, we also have another big chunk in K-8 in-school support services. So, we have social workers, Lenihan and Miller have behavior specialists. We also have, this is complicated, but .7 or .14. So, there are teachers at MHS who spend one or two periods a day in peer, helping kids with math or helping kids with science so that they don't fall behind in credits. It also helps us fund our K-6 summer school. And additionally, this is kind of what I was talking about before, Mike. We now have two literacy interventionists at Lenihan. We've only had one in the past, or one and a half. And then, we have two funded out of At-Risk at Miller. And then, we also have four more that they repurposed when they restructured their English Language Arts Department. Some additional costs that come out of the budget, as I said, Edmentum. We have a contract with Big Brothers and Big Sisters. We pay center associates for onsite services, mental health services. Net high is an opportunity for kids to get diplomas in a different way. It also buys our Positive Action curriculum, which many of you have seen as board members on our visits to the elementaries. But Positive Action is actually for K-12. And then, everyone always wants to know how we're doing with how we spent our money. So, these are the big bulleted metrics that I use and the At-Risk Committee uses to see if what we're doing is making a difference. And so, I was actually pleased with this. I think we're really trending in the right direction in At-Risk. Our graduation rate has increased. Our dropout rate, and I wish I could, can I just say out loud, Faren, you just certified it?
Can't.
I'm just going to say it. Anyway, so our dropout rate, actually, our dropout verification that just went into the state next week is down to 54 students. So, when Faren and I came, we were at 100. And now, that number is down to 54. And so, that is most definitely a thank you to MLA and the high school who continue to not give up on kids. And 54 is not where we want to be, but it's a huge increase. It's a huge positive thing to share. Okay, fine. So, that was my be happy, because this isn't making me happy, the next one. Our chronic absenteeism rate still continues to be a challenge. It went from 18% to 20.8.
Is that just the high school district?
No, that's a whole district, PK-12. And then, I thought, well, that was at the end of, that was June 2019. Maybe it's better news. So, I just pulled the data on last week. And we're at 976 students, which is 18.8%. So, not as high as 20, but not lower than 18. So, we still have a lot of work to do on chronic absenteeism. Major behavior referrals, that was good news. These are office visits for our friends in PK-12, and that's decreased. Bullying and harassment has decreased. Percentage of students at reading and math grade level, that was based on the ISAS data you just saw. So, we had some good things to report in fourth grade, not so great in eighth and 11th. So, it's kind of a mixed bag on that one. And Saber's data is our social emotional screener that K-9 students now take, or teachers, fill out a perception survey for students in their homeroom. And, hot off the press, thank you, Matt Kretzinger. We, our fall data showed 17.8% of our students at-risk across the district. And I'm not sure if that's, I don't want us to have more at-risk students in terms of their social emotional. But I do think our teachers, at least, are becoming more aware of what, how these kids are presenting in the classroom and what they're having challenges with, so we know how to best support them.
Lisa, can I ask a question about absenteeism? So, I'll give this as a personal example. It's 6:02 tonight, just meaning I got a text message. I'm going to read it to you. "Marshalltown Schools, this is the attendance office at the Marshalltown High School. Your student has an unknown absence. This is for my son. Please contact attendance for further information at the phone number. Thank you." So, if you are not an English speaker, do you receive this message in your native language?
Every building has set that up, but I believe almost all of them have done so. You can go in and do an audio recording or a written message that sends it out based on what that building has selected as their preferred language.
Yes, they do.
That was a tricky one.
Phones have to be attached.
As long as they're not blocked. So, where was your channel today, Mike?
Well, we're going to find out. Phones can be blocked, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, that's how we're leaving our goals. And then, this information, again, helps us reprioritize what we need to put in our budget that others behind. My number one thing continues to be, we have to reduce chronically absent student percentages. Reduce behavior in the classroom, which will in turn, I believe, impact our reading activity.
So, I'll say this because hopefully, somebody's watching on YouTube later or they're writing in the paper. One of the things as school board members, we found out is that chronically absent students are often taking their parents' cell phone and blocking the number of the high school so that the parents can't receive communication from the high school and blocking the number on their home phones and their cell phones. And so, these kids are smart and crafty. And so, the message to parents is make sure you're controlling your cell phone so you're receiving the communication that the school district's trying to send you.
Another tricky thing I heard is that at online registration in the summer... Another tricky thing I heard is that at online registration in the summer, when parents come to help their less tech-savvy parents, the kids were putting in their own email address as an email on file to register themselves. And so anything that comes from the school that's school-related comes to the child's email in the address.
I have a question.
Lots of things you can add.
What do we define chronic abs? What you met with?
10%. So you can, the good news is those 976 kids, some of them can fall off. If they miss any more school or miss over 10% of what's left, they can and probably get off the list. So it's kind of a rolling target, depending on how many days we've had.
Is there a trend as to which children are missing? Is it more prevalent at the early elementary, more prevalent at the high school?
Currently, our largest numbers are at the high school, but it grows with each transition in our system. So, you know, right, our elementaries are at like 6% to 9%, then it gets to Lenihan, and it grows to more like 10, 10 to 12. Then at Miller, they get a little more freedom, the kids, gets into the mid-teens, and then we're in the 20s.
Is it about 4% state-wide?
It was 8. 8 was the state average the last time I checked. So we were trying, our CIAT group was trying to get our Marshalltown results to be 15% or lower, because we were trying to not be too much. Well, that's not the state average, but it was a measurable, it would have been a great goal if we could reduce our 18 or 15.
It would have been significant.
Yeah. Okay, so lastly, what do we need? So this group over the last few years, this at-risk committee, has been like making a laundry list of things that they believe to be evidence-based ways we can tackle some of these goals. And we've slowly chipped away at that with the board's support. We've increased our spending over the last few years to add in different items in our system. And obviously, we can't do it all at one time, and we have to do things incrementally. And so what I'm recommending for next year is we do two of the five things that are still on the list, which includes expanding Bobcat University to include, in the past summers, K-6, but it would be K-8 and a ninth-grade transition. So those kids would have an opportunity to earn an elective credit for high school in July. That would be an invitation only. And then expanding, completing our implementation of the IJAG program. Right now, there's one person at Miller and two at the high school, and this fourth person would serve an at-risk group of students at MLA. And then you can see there, the top one is a big ask. Prior history, elementary schools had full-time social workers. And now we went from six to three, and those three are every other day at one school or the other. The elementary principals would really like to see those full-time social workers back, but that's quite an ask in terms of budget, it's over $180,000. So that could not be done in addition to these other two things for next year. And then there also, you see some other opportunities there in the yellow that would be down the road in our at-risk plan.
With the social workers, don't they work, is their contract more days than the teachers? Is there a way to reduce that to try to get?
They're 210 days.
They're 210 days, yeah. So they're 20 more days than, so I suppose, yeah, that would buy you 60 days back, maybe a third of one person, so like $20,000.
It just seems like they, I mean, they're targeting a lot of the things that we are trying to make an effort to lower, like absenteeism, behavior, I mean, the connectingness to the school, the relationship with the parents. So is there a way to, or even gradually, maybe some schools add this year, some next year, I don't know where the need is?
I think once I share the budget with you, maybe you can think about how that would impact the choice the board has to make down the road.
And this is money that, like, we only have like a 30 or 40% match of this money. I mean, doesn't the vast majority of this money come from the state?
Property tax?
Property tax money.
It's a property tax expense. Okay, next slide, please.
We have about, how much capacity do we have that we don't access due to the tax implications?
Probably about $300,000.
You said can't add three more full-time social workers. I don't think can't is the right word, because we could.
We could.
Right?
We could. So that $300,000 that's available could X off the list. You could get those three things done, but your property tax implications would be large.
Right. But there is, there's capacity within the at-risk funding mechanism. It's property taxes, but there's capacity there to check off all of these things on your list of your priorities.
Yes.
Right?
That's true. Okay. So the last slide that I have here just shows what our modified supplemental application looks like that goes to the Department of Ed in January. And you can see our district cost per pupil and what our certified enrollment was, and what that gives us for a possible amount, and then what that means for our local match. And so that's what you see on line six. And then we reported 1,675 at-risk students June 2019. I believe that number is from Paulette, right?
That should be current.
That was fall.
No, that's current. That's the current number that you gave me.
All right. Next slide. And this just goes back to what I was talking about, about what's out there and how the national language around potential dropouts is advising you to tackle this, is thinking about attendance behavior and classwork, which we are. All right, so the other attachment that Josh has is one that I believe...
And if you want to just go back a minute to that state application?
Sorry, slide nine.
So this kind of walks through, for our newer board members, you might probably remember from school board convention, they talked a lot about spending authority and how that's the most important thing. So what we're doing with this process is we're asking the school budget review committee for spending authority to fund this program. This is not asking for the cash right now. This is just asking for the authority. And so this program, as you can see here, it's dependent upon your enrollment. So if your enrollment goes up or down, and supplemental state aid doesn't go up or down accordingly, you could potentially lose authority within this program. So the other thing that's, that should be noted with this is, as Lisa said, this is the budget for next school year, which is still a half a year away. We don't know what supplemental state aid is going to be yet for next year. We have not started our certified budget process for next year. We don't know what our property valuations are going to be yet that that budget will be based upon. So these are estimated numbers. They will absolutely change. Staffing changes. What we have budgeted now in this budget is a 2% increase on current staff. Staffing changes. So this, this is done now, this, it's, the timing is because this becomes part of the certified budget process that we will start working on in February. Any questions on that? So this is 75%, has, 75% of it has a property tax impact, and then the other 25% is a match from the general fund. If you wanted to switch over to the other one, what we did here was just try to lay out for you what the fiscal '19 budget and actual was, and we tried to lay those out by the programs and that content area. And then we have our fiscal '20 actual budget and our fiscal '21 proposed budget. As you can see, we are requesting, what is it, about $40,000 more for the proposed budget next year than we have budgeted for this year. That basically comes in an increase in the MHS, MLA summer credit recovery. I'm looking at the green highlighted numbers.
The IJAG person is the other one?
Adding an IJAG person, yeah. And then in adding the Miller summer programming of $20,000. We had some big, you know, big program changes for this current year, and maybe a little bit less for next year, but this, the impact of this could be anywhere from seven to 10
And so therein lies the challenge. Just those, changing those two or three things out of the list of five or six has a seven to 10 cent impact on taxes.
And we need to clarify, too, that we don't know at this time what that impact will be. The more evaluations increase, the lower that impact will be. It doesn't necessarily mean that there, this doesn't absolutely guarantee that there's going to be a property tax increase.
This has taken this a little far, but it's certainly related. I wasn't able to come to the meeting last week, but you announced at the meeting or right after the meeting that we received a check for $670,000. Is the board going to have discussion on where that money is allocated and prioritized?
It's one-time money.
It's one-time, yeah.
So it goes into the general fund.
So is the board going to have any discussion about where that money is prioritized or
The board would be involved in looking at the budget for next year, knowing that the money has been placed in the general fund. The board provides input as to how that general fund is spent. So specifically, that $650,000, no. The board doesn't take that specific of a stance on any particular fund, but the board does have input into what the administration brings to us for increases in pay for all of our bargaining groups, whether we're going to increase teachers. So yes, you'll have, the board would have input into how that money is used.
Can I just add, too, our general fund budget is 80% salaries and benefits. And as Theron said, that $600,000 is, is one-time money. It's not $600,000 that we're going to get each and every year back into the system. So when you, when you have 80% salaries and benefits, using one-time money to increase staffing is not sustainable.
I didn't, I didn't suggest that. You said that. I didn't.
I'm just saying.
But I'm not, but...
80%.
But you sort of made the leap that that was my implication, and so, because that's what we're talking about right now. We're talking about more social workers. And I think that this board said that we ought to hire attorneys and go to the IRS and fight for this money, and you asked us to do it. We said yes. By God's grace and some good lawyering and negotiating, we got that money. And so I think that it is within our purview to ask, okay, now that we got this, how's it going to be spent? How should it be spent? So that's, that's, that's one person's opinion.
And I think the community is really looking at this.
I, I'll just, I'll be the village idiot if I need to, but can you tell me, in a quick answer, how this budget relates to the at-risk budget? What do we need? What are our priorities? Like, is that, is...
Right, so those five categories I showed you on that one slide, that's the, those all fall in that detailed budget you see right there.
All right, so that, that, this is the cost of what we need, is what you're saying? Excellent.
And, and what it has cost the last fiscal year.
Thank you very much.
This fiscal year in proposed. So adding those things is proposing to move the budget really from $2.3 million to $2.4 million. And so by doing so, by increasing $160,000, which Paulette continues to say is, is our best guess right now without knowing property tax valuations, that's what I'll be coming back to ask for your vote of approval for in January. And that, that increase in spending will get us those three things that I listed off that slide nine.
I think the question, Bob, that we're talking about, without saying it, is, is this at-risk budget enough to move the needle in the way that we want it moved, particularly with respect to chronic absenteeism? I think that's, that's the question that we're asking. I guess I just said it as plain as can be said now. And I'm not sure that, not sure that we know. I'm not sure we all agree with that. Maybe we should be spending more. Maybe we could be spending more. Maybe we could reduce chronic absenteeism if we spent more on social workers. I think your idea is probably a good one and deserves more vetting before we say, nope, can't afford it, seven to 10 cents is all we can afford. I don't know if that's right or not. We should think about that.
Do we know why these children are missing school? Why are they not coming?
Well, there's 976. I think there are a lot of factors. I mean, the, the social workers will tell you, especially at the elementary age, that it's an adult issue. So the parents are struggling with their own issues, which are varied, transportation, medical needs, et cetera. At the older grade levels, I think students are having more unsupervised time, and their parents maybe don't know they're not going to school as much as they're not going to school.
With the older students, they're clearly making a decision not to come. So my question is, do we know why?
I don't know if I could answer that. Well, I guess the most obvious, obvious thing is they're not feeling connected to school, they're not feeling engaged in the work that's going on at school.
Thank you for the information. We, as a board, will be asked to approve the at-risk budget at our January meeting. Tonight's was for information. You have until our next meeting to ask further questions of Paulette, Lisa, and Dr. Schute.
So this budget will come back as is with the items listed? Yes, okay.
That's your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
You cannot speak anymore.
Ever.
Are you talking to me or Lisa?
Yes.
It was a lot of information.
It was, yeah. Busy night.
Moving on to the SBRC application, Paulette?
All right, well, in keeping with the school budget review committee, this is an application that we also do annually, usually in November, but since certified enrollment was late being released this year, it was pushed back a month. So this is something that we have to submit our minutes of approval to the Department of Ed. So for the new board members, again, you remember that school funding is basically one year behind. The students that we counted this fall is what the funding for next year is based on. So there's a couple things in this application that we are asking, again, for the authority to increase our spending. So one of those is increasing enrollment. Increasing enrollment is a good problem to have. And so we have more students that we are serving this fall that we did not get funding on because they weren't with us in the prior year. And so we are asking for the authority to serve those students. That's the first part, the increasing enrollment of $384,251. The second section is open enrollment out. This is, this one's a little bit more difficult to wrap a mind around, but we look at the open enrolled out... open enrolled out on this year's enrollment versus the open enrolled out on the previous year's enrollment. And that difference is what we are asking the additional modified supplemental amount for of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The last section is the ELL beyond five years, and this is a big program for our district. So we get funding to serve ELL students for the first five years, and then we have to ask for the authority to fund them for an additional five years. We have, I think it's six hundred and, six hundred and eighty-one, the students that we are serving in ELL beyond five years, that we are requesting the authority to continue to serve those students, and that is one million thirty-five thousand four hundred and six dollars. So in total, we are asking for your permission to, to ask the School Budget Review Committee for one million, seven hundred and seven thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars in modified supplemental amount.
Questions for Paulette? May I have a motion to approve the request to SBRC in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Heitman, McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven to zero. The item coming up is an information and discussion item only to begin discussion so that board members are aware of the differences in taxation.
If you want to pull up just the presentation, those other two attachments are embedded in the presentation, so. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of information on the district's instructional support program. This is another acronym that you're going to hear. We call it the IS, IS program or the ISO levy, instructional support levy. But a little background as to what this program actually is, it was implemented back in the early nineteen nineties, and what it does is allows school districts to increase their regular program costs by up to ten percent in the general fund. This can basically, basically be used for any general fund purpose other than supplanting for such programs as dropout prevention, tag, or supplanting for PEPAL levies and such. There are a couple options. You can either, the board can either pass a board revol- revolution, resolution. Board resolution for a five-year period, or it can go to the voters and be voted on for a ten-year period. This program is, when it was established, was funded through state aid and property tax and income surtax possibly. Unfortunately, this is one of those programs that has become no longer funded by the state through state aid. The last time they funded any portion of the ISL or the instructional support program was back in two thousand, fiscal eleven, I think. So we are not, we are not receiving the full ten percent anymore because the state aid funding, which was about forty-five percent of that, no longer exists. Statistic-wise, this is a popular method of funding that school districts use. It's crucial to our programming. Currently for fiscal twenty, about eighty-four percent of school districts are utilizing the income surtax to fund a portion of the instructional support program. Our district currently does not utilize the income surtax to fund our program at all. It is one hundred percent funded by property taxes. And to show you what an impact this has on, for school districts statewide, for the current year, about ninety-one million dollars in property taxes has been replaced by the income surtax. Those surtax rates can vary between one to twenty percent. The districts that are utilizing it this year all range between one and thirteen percent. And we can also use this funding mechanism to support the voted PEPAL, but our district also does not use this to do that. That's not as, as common of a practice. Only about eighty school districts in the state actually use the income surtax to fund the voted PEPAL. Oh, PEPAL. Physical plant and equipment levy. That's one of those funds that can only be used for certain things, and it's property tax funded. This chart will show you the program history for our school district. If we look at fiscal twenty, which is the last line there, ten percent of our regular program budget for this year was actually three point seven million dollars. Because the state is no longer funding their portion of it, what we actually have access to is just over two million dollars. So our board, current board resolution says that we will fund that two point, just over two million dollars by using a property tax to support that. So currently, about ten percent of our total tax rate of eighteen thirty-three supports the instructional support program. That equates to a tax rate of about a dollar eighty-seven in the current tax rate. The next slide is.
Are you saying that we could replace a dollar eighty-seven of our tax rate with ISL?
Yeah.
If we chose?
Yeah.
That would be the maximum?
Not quite the maximum, but I'm getting there. This was a visual that the Iowa Association of School Boards just recently released, and it will show the districts in white, this is all, I think, three hundred and twenty-seven school districts in the state, and the districts in white are the districts that do not utilize the income surtax to support the instructional support program. Our district is right up there.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you. That's Marshall, Marshalltown School District, and so you can see every district around us is utilizing the income surtax to support this program. And then this just kind of lays out what those districts are actually, our neighboring districts are actually using as their current income surtax rate. So for instance, East Marshall has a ten percent income surtax to fund their instructional support program. And you can see the rest of those listed there. So you'll probably remember from, current board members will remember from our certified budget process last year that we are a student-rich, property-poor district. We have, the Marshalltown School District has the ninth lowest property valuation supporting each student in the state. Those valuations range from about one point four million up in Okoboji per student, down to one hundred and seventy-three thousand per student. Marshalltown, this, these are fiscal nineteen numbers. For fiscal twenty, we're right at around two hundred thousand, but we're still the ninth lowest in the state. So property tax rates are really a function of property value. The less value that you have per student, the more your rate is going to go up. As discussed, you know, during the previous two agenda items, programming needs are great in the district, and property taxes impose a greater burden on low-income individuals than on mid-to-high income individuals. So if a low-income individual has no tax liability, then the income surtax does not impact them. The income surtax applies to only the income tax owed, not your taxable income. In an effort to increase programming in some areas, such as the dropout prevention at-risk that we were just talking about, our ELL, one of the things that we could consider and that I would recommend to the board is consider shifting a small portion of this funding for this program to income surtax, as it's more sensitive to taxpayer income and their ability to pay taxes. If, based on current year numbers, the highest surtax rate that we could implement right now would be an eight percent. That would not be the recommendation. We have to have a property tax component funding this program. So you have to have at least one dollar of property tax impact. To go to nine percent under current valuations and such would, would make that negative. So the highest that we could do would be eight percent. I would not recommend going straight to eight percent. Based on current numbers, twenty-two cents equates to about each one percent, and that equates to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Twenty-two cents? Wait, you just said what? Twenty-two?
I'm sorry. What, say that again, please.
Each one percent of income surtax equates to about twenty-two cents on the property tax rate.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what are you recommending then?
Microphone?
What are you recommending?
I am recommending that the board consider this. This would require an amendment to the current board resolution. That would require a public hearing and a two-meeting process. So before the certified budget process starts in February, I would recommend that, that we talk about this and consider it so that we have options to support additional social workers and other programming needs.
So what would the cynic say? If I was going to be a cynic, what would I say about this? Would I say, it's not really property tax replacement. I'm just going to leave the property tax rate the way it is, and I'm going to add this on top, and so the net taxes to taxpayers are going to be more. Is that what the cynic would say?
Could.
Yep.
And, and the reality is it's a means to go towards more progressive form of taxation in order to access more of the capacity that's available to us that we've been afraid to tackle because of the property tax implication.
Well, and, and income taxes are progressive. This is a flat tax. It's a flat rate surtax on a progressive tax. But real estate property taxes are regressive. So you could have two individuals that pay the same property taxes because their property values are the same, but one makes two hundred thousand dollars and the other one makes sixty thousand dollars. So one person is going to pay a much higher percentage of their income towards property taxes than the other person, and they have exactly the same property.
As someone who actually spent a lot of time talking to community members, we are a community that has a lot of people on fixed incomes. We have a lot of people living on only social security, and for those people, an increase in property tax could push them out of their homes. I don't think that's in our best interest, so I would like to support this measure.
Other questions or comments for Paulette?
Thank you.
We've spent some time over the last couple meetings talking about our work comp, property casualty insurance coverage, and we're currently, our board policy requires that we review this program every three years. We are in the third year of a three-year contract, and so based on the information that has been shared with you previously, based on finance committee input, board leadership input, we have gone out and to seek binding quotes from other companies, and we have received a couple that we're, we're happy with and would recommend, at the next meeting would be recommending those. But because the way our current contract is set up, it requires us to notify them by December thirty-first of our intent to withdraw. So this would be a resolution that the board needs to pass if they would choose to withdraw from our current coverage and go to a different company. I think the savings in year one is about eighty-six thousand dollars, and that too has a property tax impact. Property tax, or the management fund is what funds our property and work comp insurance premiums, and that, that is a property tax, so. We are recommending, my recommendation would be to approve the resolution directing the withdrawal of the school district from membership in the Iowa Public School Insurance Program effective July first of 2020.
At our last meeting, you received the information regarding an alternative insurance.
Do you want to motion, B?
Yes, please.
I'd move for approval.
I'll second it.
Miller, McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven to zero. Back to you.
The next agenda item is the resolution to support the proposed use of SAVE revenue for an athletic facility infrastructure project. We had the public hearing earlier in the evening. And so what, what this is doing, under the new legislation for the sales tax, it requires districts to have a public hearing and pass such resolution when using sales tax dollars for athletic facility infrastructure projects. So we would recommend approving the use of SAVE revenue for the tennis court complex project.
Questions for Dr. Schute or Paulette?
I think that your, your Microsoft Word document on Saturdays that you gave to us said that you were going to try, you're going to find out about grant money that would help support this project hopefully by the end of the week?
Yes.
Okay. And that we still have decision to decide, okay, do we want to do this based on the grant money?
Right.
Options that we have in? Good.
Yeah, so we have different junctures along the way is illustrated in that timeline. You know, tonight, we also have to approve, moving forward with plans, specs, et cetera, which we'll have a work session on so the board can become intimately familiar on January sixth with those plans, designs, specifications, prior to making a decision, yea or nay, to go out to bid on January thirteenth. So it's become a little bit more complicated with the number of actions that have to take place, because not only do you have your traditional construction requirements with public hearings, resolutions, et cetera, but now we have another layer of actions relative to use of the one cent sales tax or SAVE. This is related to that.
May I have a motion to approve the use of SAVE revenue for the tennis court complex project? project?
So moved. Second.
Unteeed Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries 7-0. Paulette?
Stop! All right. This, as Theron just mentioned, there are several steps in this process that must be taken. And so this is setting the resol...or passing the resolution, setting the public hearing on the plans, specs, et cetera, for the tennis court complex project and authorizing the notice to bidders.
Questions for Paulette?
Move for approval.
Miller Heitman?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries 7-0. Okay, and moving right along, Dr. Schutte.
So typically around November-ish in the past, the board, October, November, has been asked to consider voluntary early retirement. This year, we're coming to you a little bit later due to the fact that one of the things that we've talked about needing to have before making the decision to offer it is our certified enrollment. And as you'll remember, the board approved what we certified the first meeting in December because of delay from the state in affirming that certification. So typically, we present our recommendation at one meeting and ask for approval at the next. We're wanting to consolidate that ask and ask the board to take on approving our recommendation to offer early retirement, once again, for the school year. There are...was it 41 people, Paulette, that met the age 55 and 15 years of experience, which are the two primary qualifiers? That doesn't mean there's 41 people that would be in a position to necessarily take advantage of this. And to the best of our knowledge, and we don't have all of the information necessary, as an example, we don't necessarily, as a district, have information about a person's status with I-Pers prior to working for our district, you know, whether they had I-Pers, didn't have I-Pers, whether they kept their I-Pers, if they had it, that sort of thing. So we really think, based on what we know, the number is significantly less than 41 that would be in a position of potential readiness to take advantage of this. But what we are asking in terms of offering, and it's the same incentive package as it has been in years past, that we would give our eligible employees till February 28th instead of the 1st of February to make the decision. I think generally having winter break to start thinking about whether it's something they want to take advantage of or not is a good thing. So we would recommend offering it again.
Questions for Dr. Schutte? May I have a motion to approve the voluntary early retirement incentive program as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Altus McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries 7-0. Onto policies. We have 903.4E. Changes were made at the last meeting, but none have been...
There have been no further changes.
Yeah. And also for 903.5, may I have a motion to amend those two policies?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Heitman, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. The motion carries 7-0.
Does that waive the...
And waive the second reading.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. We're on to you, Sean.
Well, that 903.5R1 is a new one. I don't think that one was one of mine.
Oh, okay. No, that's...
But I can do the other three.
903.5R, which is now 903.5R1.
Yeah, so we had two changes to this. One was we've changed out where it said Director of Student Services to Superintendent in terms of being the gatekeeper of that. And then the other was, it appeared to us as we were reviewing the policy, that half of it wasn't included, which mainly was just providing definitions for what was in the policy or regulations. So we've added that back. So those will need to come back for a first...
Any questions for Dr. Schutte at this juncture? We'll come back at the next board meeting. Okay. Now you, Sean.
Okay. Let's start at 903.7 is recommended for deletion. But the last sentence of that is added to 903.1. There was sort of duplication between those two. So we're...the proposal is to eliminate one and take the stuff that we need and put it in that school community groups.
Okay.
And then 904.2, there are some changes primarily to align with IASB-proposed model policies. So those...
So we're bringing back 903.1 and 904.2. Is that correct?
Yes. Do you want to delete 903.7 tonight?
Yes, we can do that. Want to make a motion?
I move we delete policy 903.7.
Second.
Heitman, unteeed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries 7-0. Anything of note, Mr. Sotters?
Well, we're in the holiday season, if you guys can believe it.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Anika.
And therefore, we've had lots and lots going on. So, yeah, it'll be...it'll be a great last week before break. I'm sort of getting mapped out on all the events going on. Hopefully, we'll have several for this week and also several to share next week.
Will you be going to the ugly sweater contest?
To the ugly sweater contest? Is that district-wide? Or where is that at?
High school.
At the high school? You know what? I could definitely make appearance to that.
Okey-dokey.
Am I allowed to wear an ugly sweater, Theron?
Sure.
All right. You guys hear that?
There's nothing against an ugly sweater.
Have you seen his ugly sweaters?
Unless it has profanity on it, or drugs, or alcohol, or...
I don't think any of my ugly sweaters have any of that.
There you go.
So I will...I will say, because Mr. Unteeed questioned our student board reps on this about the poetry read aloud or contest on Thursday. Thursday, we're supposed to be having a new graphic installed at the Marsh Town Performing Arts Center, formerly known as the Auditorium. So I don't know if it'll be done in time for that poetry read aloud, but we've been working since last spring on creating an honor wall for all of our all-state recognized students in the disciplines of band, chorus, orchestra, as well as speech and debate, debating back to at least 1978. So we're hopeful that that graphic will be going up sometime Thursday.
Where is that at?
In the auditorium.
Oh, inside?
Yeah. We...our Buildings and Grounds Department framed around where we lost those windows, which were supplanted with drywall that was pretty unsightly. So they've done a beautiful job of framing that up, putting some lights in there, and there'll be a graphic installed hopefully Thursday. And the Auditorium Foundation Board, now known as the Marsh Town Performing Arts Center Impact Foundation Board, has agreed to fund that.
Thank you, sir. That finance committee has been canceled, hasn't it?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Board work session on Monday, January 6th regarding the tennis court project. Mr. Miller, you have two policies. You have a heavy load. Is that workable for you?
I'll do my best.
Okay. The high school will give us their school showcase at our January 13th meeting. Looking at committee reports, who was at the school improvement advisory committee meeting?
I don't know.
Would you like to give us a quick report?
We met on the 9th, last Monday. That's good attendance. We split into groups and talked about our life-ready competencies. So we have six, and we...six is it? And then we split into groups to look for some descriptors. And I left it a little bit early, but it looks like everybody got some down.
We will be sending a survey out to different groups with the descriptors to get feedback from the community to see if there's anything we need to add or change by February.
Who was it, Equity?
I couldn't remember.
Sean.
So the previous meeting, they had looked at data on disparities in enrollments between different groups in different courses. And so this meeting was more brainstorming ways to address that. That was primarily what we talked about.
Dr. Schutte? Hey, sir.
Sir, the Advisory Committee on Intergovernmental Relations, which meets quarterly, met today. It was somewhat sparsely attended in comparison to most of our meetings. Representation from the county talked in large part about the closing down of North Center Street as it exits town. And the fact that it could be a long time before that road gets reopened with work that they're doing on bridges and such. It was good for us to have discussion to just make sure we stay on the same page with these projects between the school district and the county as it relates to impacting transportation routes and that sort of thing. But we were...we were on top of that one. City Marsh Town, for the most part, they talked about the upcoming census and, once again, the importance of all people being counted. They mentioned that, I think, just as of the last day or two, 10 jobs were posted, basically census takers or counters that will go door-to-door and try to help assist. We, as a school district, of course, will try to push out whatever information the city puts out regarding it as well because it does have an impact on different funding sources and grant opportunities and that sort of thing. So it's important that we have an accurate count. They also...the county also, going back to the county, talked about the courthouse and how there's been some delays with COPULA. And the architects have diverted to some other project work they have. They're hoping things get back up and running full steam in January. Still hopeful for possibly a June completion. They talked about Iowa Valley Community College District, talked about, under the direction of their new chancellor, Dr. Christie Fisher. They're in the midst of some strategic planning for the college, also working on prioritization, as was recently written about in the newspaper, of how they're going to use the new funds through the bond referendum towards the facility improvements that they have there as well. Anything else of note? We talked about our enrollment increase, our IRS refund, and the fact that governmental services will be part of our teacher externship experience in the summer 2020. So encourage any ideas they have for how we can provide an enriching and enlightening experience for the teachers that participate in that on June 15th. Yep.
Well, we have our last report on the school board convention. Lisa?
Shall I come to the table?
Please.
One hour is not enough. Do some board members want to go first?
We'll just take them in order like they're listed here.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Seems like a really long time ago. But, oh, gosh. So at the first day, I was able to attend Finance 201 with Paulette in the morning. That was really good. It was a nice review about SBRC, which you heard about tonight. So that was a good reminder. And a continued opportunity...I love asking Gary questions about how being a property-poor school district affects our...affects us, especially because we have such high numbers of ELS and different open enrollment out, financial issues. So it was always a good refresher. I was just super impressed with the two keynote speakers we had. I thought Sir Ken Robinson was...I mean, I think they did a nice job of talking about the two ends of what we're dealing with. So he was focused on creativity and thinking about the whole child, and he has such a powerful message, and he's funny. And then listening to Hamish Brewer, that was just kind of the kick in the pants, I think, that we all needed to, like, remember that we have to put the most passionate people in front of our kids to lead our schools. You know, he really hit home on that message about all means all, and then you have to...you have to fight for every kid. Like, it just doesn't matter. Every kid needs us. And then the one session I went to that I thought was really informative was called "The Slippery Slope of Social Media for School Boards." It's a lot of S's. And it was Johnston Community Schools that presented it, one of their board members and their communications director. And they just talked about the power of Twitter and Facebook and social media and how they use it as a school district. And then the school board member gave his take on how he uses his personal Twitter to, like, retweet things that the school district shares out so that, you know, it's just a way to touch more people and broaden the audience. And that...they talked about...they also talked about how they address on social media some of the naysayers and some of the cynics that don't have nice things to say about things that we...decisions we make or how we handle processes or situations. And I just...I thought it was really awesome because she kept saying how, in her years as a communications director, that every time she personally responds back to those people and say, "Here's my number. Please call me. I can tell you have something you want to talk about," that those people never call.
Never call.
Yeah, they never call, and they never come in to visit. So it was just kind of a way, I think, to be very proactive in dealing with the feedback and the cynics that you get out there. So I learned a lot in that session.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bob?
I would add that Mr. Brewer...I forgot his name, so I'm glad you went first, but I called him the Tattooed Principal, was kind of powerful. Some of...I'm reflecting on my own experience, too. I was adopted when I was seven years old. And I've always thought that love is not a squishy, romantic, Hallmark card sort of virtue. It is a practical thing, and it can be answered best by asking the question, "Who's there?" Right? So he is fond, in his schools, of, like, telling children that he loves them. I don't care that much about that. I think it's not a very Iowan thing to do either, right? But I think that being there is a clear demonstration that there is love, and it's...you've just got to be there. In addition, some of the visits, I didn't make all, but I've made two, and among the things to elementary schools that we've been a part of, that also was part of Lisa's report on continuing not to give up on kids. But there were two...there were two different things that happened, or that I saw in two different schools. One was that it was posted that one... One was that it was posted that one of the, the goals for that school was to encourage children who are open-hearted, which I think is frankly part of effective conflict resolution. And in a separate elementary school, there was some reference to in-kind, right, which just pays itself back. So that was a very squishy sort of beginning to my experience with the thing, but I think there is hard-headed application to these kind of principles. In addition, I ended up getting a phone call from the Iowa Association of School Boards about the, the conference and other stuff, too, and I made mention to them that the budgeting 101 thing is, you, we need four days on it, or they need to tear it down and rebuild it, or something. I mean, I ran it--
An hour wasn't enough?
It was two and a half hours, I think. It was 129 slides. The handouts that they gave you couldn't read some of the print on them. So I spoke, I said, "Look, I recognize that people are giving their time there," but I made some limited recommendations about how that might be improved. I also found quite interesting, I'm almost done, Charles City has some unique methods of bargaining with teachers that perhaps could be considered. And then also, there was some depressing news about recruitment retention of teachers. I don't know if we should build a wall around Marshalltown to keep them in, but--
I was going to say, out or in?
And then the last thing is that the Urban Education Network evening was quite engaging, and I was lucky to sit next to the superintendent of schools at, in Davenport, where I grew up. And I reflected with, with that superintendent that one of the teachers that had the greatest impact on me was my junior high school librarian, whose name was Leona DeWitt. And I'm going to track her down and send her a thank you note at some point, because she really made a difference. That's pretty much it.
All right. Well, I, I also, I think, went to the Charles City presentation, and they did have some really good ideas about negotiations. When people approached me to run for the school board, a number of them said that there were strained relationships between the school board and teachers, and teachers were feeling undervalued, and as a result, we had a lot of teacher turnover in this district. That concerns me. You talked about PLCs. And the way PLCs work, teachers are working together to prioritize goals, and it's a, it's a multi-year process. So if you have a lot of teacher turnover, it doesn't work as well. You need to build those relationships, and you need to build on the process from the year before. And when you have a lot of teacher turnover, you end up starting over every year. So I did, I went to that session, and they did have some really good ideas. I thought Ken Robinson and Hamish Brewer were excellent. Something that has been concerning me over the last couple decades is an overemphasis on standardized testing. We need to be working on developing good citizenship among our students, treating one another kindly, really caring about what's going on around us. That's far more important than any score they'll ever get on a standardized test. And I think if we were doing that, we would have less absenteeism, because the children would know that we really care, and the education we would be giving them would be relevant.
Sarah?
Okay. So I went on Wednesday and Thursday morning only. I went to the Thriving in Your First 90 Days, which was great information. We received a handbook, and sitting with Dr. Schutte was good to be able to ask questions with all the information that we were given. One takeaway I had from that one was how important advocacy is for a board, so that was kind of my big takeaway from there. In the afternoon, I went to Finance 101, and I think Bob summed that up pretty nicely. And I think Dr. Schutte's used the reference of trying to drink from a fire hose. It was overwhelming, but a few basic takeaways, at least. On Thursday, I went to an AEA presentation on how can you ensure your board, or how can your board ensure all students are future-ready? And this kind of tags onto what Jan was just saying. It was very interesting to me. I had no idea that Iowa was number one in the whole US with their graduation rate, but when we look at where we're at for post-secondary completion, we're 35, and there's a huge gap there. And to what Jan was just saying, you need more than just a 31 or a 32 on an ACT. You need people skills, attendance, and a desire to work. So having kids be workforce-ready was key in that one. One thing that one of the presenters said that just hit home with me, the norm for schools is reading Shakespeare. No one is reading an HVAC manual and being workforce-ready. So he just kind of equated it to, what is Shakespeare doing for the majority of our students to prepare them to be workforce-ready? And then I went to Mark's presentation, and you guys saw that last week, so I'm not going to go into it, but it's great. And the only thing I would add to that is I'm a member, a parent member on the PBIS at Miller, so I'm starting to see that team work and utilize a lot of the things that your team put in place. So, nice.
Thank you all. What have we done tonight to improve the education of students in the Marshalltown District?
Listen to Woodbury and how well the bilingual curriculum is working, so it's always nice to see the kiddos.
Is this supposed to be in your profession? Be good.
Whoever.
I'd love to see the continued support of the gentleman that felt motivated, inspired to help with kids making the block championships. Like, I think that would pay more ideas, just so it makes Marshalltown really special.
I felt like we encouraged the children from Woodbury when they were here. It was good to hear them.
Well, we were just here for three hours, so heaven forbid we didn't do anything good for kids.
Vision Marshalltown, it's always nice to hear what they're doing for our town and who all collaborates to that. I didn't know we had that many board members in our board, their board.
Yeah, I think we got a little closer on what the AT-RIC's budget ought to do and what problems we're trying to address with that budget.
We also got to see the successes of the AT-RIC budget.
Absolutely, absolutely. I like the green on your slide.
Which is something the board has asked for, Mr. Miller specifically.
We also got to see that some of the things the elementary principals and element, or instructional people have done for math is making a difference.
My quote this evening comes from Laura Ingalls Wilder, and she says, "Our hearts grow tender with childhood memories and love of kindred." That was for you, Bob. "And we are better throughout the year for having in spirit become a child again at Christmas time." Wishing you all seasons greetings, happy holidays, whatever you choose to celebrate. We'll see you in January.
Next year.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
McGinnis, Altis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Too bad Nora wasn't here. She thought we used to have such short meetings.